Okay, good evening, everyone. A rainy Tuesday. Please take your seats and we will call the Glendale City Council meeting to order 6:04 p.m. on Friday, not Friday, Tuesday, February 6th. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Council members, Asadurian?
Here.
Divine?
Here.
Kasakian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Mayor Botman?
Here. And would the audience please rise for the stand of allegiance and repeat after me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with a freedom of justice for all. And please remain standing for a few minutes while we hear the invocation.
Let us begin by acknowledging that we are standing on the indigenous lands of the Gabriellino Tangwa people. In honor of Black History Month, I will now read an excerpt from the poem "For My People" by Margaret Walker. Let a new earth rise; let another world be born; let a bloody peace be written in the sky; let a second generation full of courage issue forth; let a people-loving freedom come to growth; let a beauty full of healing and a strength of final clinching be depolstering in our spirits and our blood. Thank you.
You may be seated. Madam Clerk, may we have your report, please?
Yes, the agenda for the February 6, 2024, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on February 1, 2024, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And what is next?
Next are presentations and appointments. The first item is Agenda Preview for the Meetings of Tuesday, February 13, 2024, by Assistant City Manager John Tachalian.
Good evening, Mayor Botman, members of council. We have a pretty short agenda next week. Only one item under consent regarding Public Works's requests seeking authorization to destroy certain records within the Public Works Department. Under adoption of ordinances, we may have one item, depending on how the conversation tonight goes, with respect to the tree-related codes. Under action items, we have two. The first item would be seeking council's approval of a memorandum of understanding with the Glendale Firefighters Association. And the second item that evening will be a word of contract for the Beeline Fixed Route and Dial-A-Rite Transit Services.
Okay, thank you. And next?
Next is the reappointment of Caroline Tufankian to the Arts and Culture Commission by Asadurian and Najarian, 1:30, 24.
Okay, who would like to?
We've had the opportunity to speak to Commissioner Tufankian. She's eager to continue serving, and both Councilmember Najarian and I find her dedication to the Arts Commission important to our community and look forward to having her serve and getting the votes tonight.
Second. So that was a motion, right?
Yes, that was a sure.
But we'll say that. Asadurian made the motion, Councilmember Najarian seconded it, and now we can go to roll call.
Councilmembers Asadurian?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Botman?
Yes. Thank you, and congratulations to Caroline Tufankian, who's not here, I guess. No, she's not here tonight, but if she's watching, congratulations. Okay, what's our next item?
Next item is consent items, including minutes. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
Okay, and I, did you get a request to pull an item?
I did not receive a request to pull an item.
Okay, I got a text saying that Jackie Gish would like, let me look, let me look, and she's not on the line? She hasn't called in?
Someone is calling in at the moment, right now.
Okay, yeah. She would like to pull item 4B, so if we could...
I'll move the balance of the consent calendar.
Very good, exactly. Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. I'll give that one to Councilmember Divine. So motion and a second. Roll call on the balance of the consent calendar, please.
Yes. Councilmembers Asadurian?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Botman?
Yes. Thank you. And has she called in?
Yes.
Okay. So if you could read item 4B into the record?
Into the record, okay. 4B is Glendale Water and Power Regarding the Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with Ascend Analytics LLC to Assist Glendale Water and Power with the Development of the City of Glendale 2024 Integrated Resource Plan. One motion authorizing the city manager or his designated to execute amendment number two to the existing professional services agreement, contract number 8002134, with Ascend Analytics LLC to increase the contract amount by $40,000 to a new not-to-exceed amount of $320,000.
Thank you. And do we have somebody from GWP here in case there's a question to be answered?
Yes, yes, from Mayor.
Okay, but we will go to Ms. Gish. Is she on?
Yes.
Because she wanted to make a comment on this item.
Dr. Gishironeri, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Mayor Botman, City Council members, the additional $40,000 cost to ascend to fix the IRP could have been avoided if staff and ascend had followed council's August 2022 resolution. Instead, staff and ascend brought to council a noncompliant plan on December 12th. The packet for today's meeting says this cost could have been avoided if council had followed staff's recommendation. But isn't it staff's job to follow council's direction? And now we all have to contribute to the increased costs. I also want to know about the plan for the revised IRP. Has any progress been made on revising it since December 12th? When will a new draft be circulated to council, the STAG, and the public? When the public is allowed to see it, will we be notified that it is now on the website? How long will everyone have to review it? Thank you.
Thank you. Perhaps we can get some response to the questions about the timing for the new IRP. Anything you can update us on that.
Good evening, council. Scott Mellon, Assistant General Manager, Power Management. Right now, we have a request into the CEC requesting a 90-day extension. As you all know, that the IRP was actually due January 1st. We have received response back from the CEC that they have received our request. We haven't gotten a confirmation that they are allowing us to have an extension yet. We're working under the premise that we have it. This extension gives us the ability, or this, the additional $40,000 gives us the ability to make the modifications to the IRP that's necessary to accommodate the council's direction. And we're moving forward with it. There's been a little work on it, not much, because we require the assistance of Ascend Analytics to complete the work. If council recalls, the IRP that we brought to the council for approval was over 300 pages. It provided great deal amount, or it had a great deal of modeling involved in it. And switching it around to meet the council's direction requires some undoing. So it's going to take us a little time and a little dollars to make the modifications.
So what's our ETA for that?
Well, like I said, we have 90 days that we've asked for. We're hoping to have it done within the 90 days.
Okay, and will it come to, when will the public be able to review it?
I don't think it will be reviewed. We're making modifications council asked us to make under the direction that it was to make, and then we'll be submitting it.
It has to come back to us, doesn't it?
I don't recall that that was the case with the resolution. I think the resolution was to make the modifications and submit.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I believe the direction was pretty clear.
Yeah.
And the resolution stated council's direction, and Ascend Analytics and staff will incorporate those, that direction. There wasn't any level of confusion about what council's direction was.
Okay, but there was no issue from the CEC side that it has to be approved by council before it's submitted?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Sorry, I still don't have a full voice.
I have the same problem.
The council doesn't have to approve the new IRP?
No. No, as part of the resolution, it was to make the change and submit.
It's deemed approved once that's changed.
But there was, as you recall, there was a model already, one of the options was there.
Okay, yes.
So I think council's position was clear, majority of council's position was clear, as to where we wanted to be at the end of the RFP. You're not going to fudge any data, are you?
No.
I mean, all the data is going to be reliable, authenticated.
We will say exactly what we had stated to council through the IRP. The only thing will be that the primary focus of the IRP will be on scenario four, which is the direction of the council. We will have to state, obviously, if things don't come to fruition, as scenario four plans out, we have to have a fallback. We will state those fallbacks in the IRP.
So give us a copy, even if we don't vote on it?
I can do that.
That's all. 300 pages? Is there an executive summary?
There is an executive summary, yes.
Okay. To be honest, I don't think I'll read 300.
Yeah. Yeah, so I think first 10 to 15 pages were in the executive summary.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right.
So...
I'll move the item 4B.
Can we have the motion?
Second.
Second, okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asadurian?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Botman?
Yes. Thank you. And what's next?
Next are city council and staff comments.
Okay. Councilmember Kasakian?
Yes. I'd like to, if the city clerk can put up the photos, I'd like to make a request from this body to adjourn this evening's meeting in memory of Thomas Jefferson Denton V., or as we all knew him, TJ. TJ was born on April 4, 1962. Warm-hearted and with a loving zest for his life and service to the wider community, TJ, as he was affectionately known to friends, looked on the many blessings of his life with gratitude. "I have nothing to complain about," was his common refrain. He died on January 24, 2024, after a swiftly crushing diagnosis of pancreatic cancer. Born to Thomas and Jean Denton and the brother of three older sisters, TJ grew up in Glendale, California, and happily spent his life there, here. At Glendale High School, he was on the water polo and swim teams, enjoying being a cheerleader and brought his humor and artistic abilities to the yearbook's student group. He studied graphic art at San Jose State and quickly entered his parents' jewelry and awards business, Thomas Denton &amp; Company, where he worked side by side with his best friend and beloved father, Tom, for over 30 years. TJ and Barbara Paddock met in the first grade, and it seemed like a fairy tale destiny that they would find each other again in college and begin their romance and life together. Married for 37 years, Barb was TJ's everything in life. They delighted in and depended on one another through all of life's highs and lows. Fated to be surrounded by women in his life, TJ and Barb raised three daughters, and just this last year, he became the grandfather of three granddaughters. And here you can see their wedding photo from 19, I believe, 83. And I think in the next photo, you'll see TJ at a Kiwanis meeting where he was a fixture, wearing glasses in the center. As an adult, TJ followed in his father's footsteps by becoming a relied-upon leader in both civic and church settings. He was a member of Kiwanis for 37 years and served as president. He and Barb also have been deeply dedicated to service at Salem Lutheran Church, where he occupied many leadership positions, including president of the congregation, mentor to confirmation students, and most importantly, teacher for young people regarding the importance of being an usher on Sunday mornings. TJ is survived by his wife, Barbara Denton, his daughters Emily Dickinson, Jeremy Shelby, McDonald, Kyle, and Elizabeth Denton, Tom, his granddaughters, and nephews, and many loving nieces and their children. His loved ones and dear friends keenly feel the loss of his sweet and funny personality and are grateful for the sojourn they all shared with him. And I was not able to attend the memorial service because I'm still recovering from a lost voice that had me sidelined last week, but I'll simply say that TJ was a fixture in this community. Those of us who went to Glendale High School remember the, I think that there have been many, many generations of Glendale High School athletes and students who have a piece of the Denton family in their home somewhere in the form of a trophy or a plaque. And they were a family of jewelers. They later moved their jewelry business to Kenneth Village and continued to serve the community, and his loss was sudden and tragic, but he will remain, for us all, a reminder of how we should all live our lives. So with that, I'd like to ask us to adjourn in his memory.
I have a comment.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up with that because I did know TJ and I did attend the memorial service. And back when I was teaching and coaching, we oftentimes went to Denton's for trophies for our athletes. But one of the comments that the daughters made, they asked him, when he knew of his fate, what they should tell the grandchildren as they grew up. And he said, "Tell them to be generous, to be funny, and to be kind." What a great legacy that is for him to leave behind. So he was a great guy. Thank you.
Okay. Other comments?
I have one comment.
Asadurian?
I had the opportunity to visit West Coast Customs in Burbank last week and take along with us our Glendale Youth Alliance staff. For those that don't know, West Coast Customs builds custom cars, but what they do have is a free program. It's an eight-to-10-week program session for 18- to 23-year-olds who are interested in building cars. It's an opportunity for those who may not be seeking a higher education and are looking to maybe get into that space. The program is free. The curriculum only takes about 14 participants during each session. Our Glendale Youth Alliance is going to be looking into ways to integrate some of the youth and participants of our program, but this is something that they've also been doing with Burbank Adult School, and I look forward to us maybe having some conversations with Glendale Community College to incorporate that into our curriculum. It's a great segue. Ryan, the owner, actually writes the curriculum himself and makes sure that he's hands-on with the students, and so it's a great opportunity for anyone that's interested in this space. Information on the program is available on their, on the West Coast Customs website.
Thank you. Councilmember Najarian?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Pursuant to AB 1234, I'd like to announce that on Saturday, I attended the Independent Cities Association Winter Seminar. That's held twice a year, and the focus is on public safety, and it was probably the best seminar that I had attended. I was in attendance with our city manager and police chief. They covered topics such as police recruiting and retention, which seems to be an issue for many, many departments throughout. We heard from the chief of the Manhattan Beach Police Department. We had a session on crisis communications. Perhaps the most interesting was a discussion on technology that's used in policing, led by Chief Stainbrook, who is the chief of the Beverly Hills Police Department, that's perhaps leading the region in electronic surveillance, as well as other means of law enforcement. After lunch, we heard from Dr. Drew Pinsky, who talked about the fentanyl crisis sweeping the country, and we finished up with a discussion on civility or chaos at the council meetings. You choose. So I encourage all my colleagues, when they do get a chance, to spend some time at these seminars. You can always learn something new, as well as, of course, the camaraderie and meeting and discussing issues of mutual concern with other council members and mayors who attend. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Member Divine, nothing? Well, for my part...
Mayor, let me just, I didn't want to combine my comments with the request for a German in memory of TJ Denton, but I did want to bring up a couple of points, one of which, just three quick things. The first is that I know that we've been given some information about the food vendors that have popped up all over the city that'll take up entire sidewalks in certain places. And I know that we'll probably, hopefully, we're going to have a discussion as to what council can do or what our enforcement powers are, but I want to juxtapose that with, you know, there's, on Brand Boulevard, one of the shop owners contacted me because they had received a notice for having an A-frame sign, one of those signs that you put outside your shop, kind of advertising your wares and trying to draw attention to your business. And they had received a citation because I guess our city rules say that you have to have a permit in order to place that out there, and it needs to be in a certain place. Then they had gone online and tried to get into the portal and hadn't, but it just seems counterintuitive that we're allowing entire vendors to take up entire sections of sidewalks in the city, to set up these pop-up restaurants, while we're citing shop owners and businesses for having a small portion of the sidewalk taken up by a sign to draw attention to their business. It's just from, I understand that rules are made at this diocese. Over time, they're, you know, implemented into the city's enforcement policies, but we have to have some sort of logic as to when and how we implement these. If we have one really massive violation or taking over of space, public space, versus a smaller one, and we're citing that person, that's the kind of thing that, when the public sees and experiences and business owners, it erodes their trust in what government has, is intended to do, to help the public. So I'd like us to look into that, and if it is happening in other areas, to stop it, the A-frame sign enforcement, because our businesses are still recovering from the pandemic, many of them. The second item I'd like to ask for is, and that was just my commentary. My second comment is on updates on the Shoal Canyon dump closure. I was contacted by one of the individuals that had shown a great interest in this and had spoken out on this issue, and they mentioned that the dump closure has been pushed out to 2027 potentially, and we were under the understanding that it was supposed to be by 2025. So I would like us to have an update on what is happening. I think that we need to be as transparent as possible with the public as to what's happening with Shoal Canyon, the dump up there, that we all voted to close. So if staff can schedule a quarterly update to tell us what is happening with that, and it's one thing to update us, you can provide us with memos, but again, in the spirit of transparency, I think the public deserves to know where we're moving with the closure of that dump. And the last one is, I have reached out to staff and asked for an update on the $6 million grant that we received from the state for the Verdugo Wash study. And I've asked that, you know, in addition to the cost-benefit analysis that we're waiting for, I want to get a breakdown of how those funds are to be spent and how specifically they're encumbered. Given the rising cost of land and our need to acquire open space in other parts of the city, $6 million just seems like such a vast amount for a study that I'd like to see if we can use those funds to possibly make acquisitions for park space in other parts of the city as well, or if there's any other ways we could use parts of those funds. Thank you. That's it.
Okay. Okay, I was just going to say that I was on a trip to Japan, care of the Japanese Ministry of Foreign Affairs. Got back before last week's meeting, but I could barely speak last week, so I didn't say anything about it. But I did want to thank the council general, Japanese council general and his staff for arranging it. The, one of the main, well, one of the highlights was a meeting with, well, a visit too, and a meeting with the mayor of our sister city, Higashi Osaka. We had a very warm meeting, and the mayor is interested in rekindling some of the education and other cultural exchanges that we have, that we did have in the past with our sister city and that were disrupted about 10 years ago, but he's very much interested in getting those back on track. And so just ask that, this is partly just to share this with my colleagues and to ask staff to, to make sure we discuss that further with the consulate and perhaps with our GUSD flag, Japanese-language flag, schools, because it would make sense that it includes some kind of an educational exchange, perhaps by some of our students of Japanese going there and some of their students of English coming here. That's, that's it. Ready? Yes?
Yeah, if I may.
I was going to say, Councilmember, City Manager, go on.
Thank you for that clarification. Just, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to provide a quick update on the status of the storm and how it affected the city. As you know, the major storm that started Saturday and persisted until now has resulted in record-breaking levels of rainfall, and LA County declared a state of emergency for the county, obviously. Luckily, and I'm happy to report that, we fared pretty well compared to other cities in the region and in the state, and wanted to give a kind shout-out to our GWP electric crews who worked around the clock to ensure that all the power outages were restored in a timely manner, and there were quite a few of them, as well as to our forestry, and Mr. Clerk is here, our forestry and street maintenance crews, Mr. Hardgrove's direction, that again, worked around the clock to ensure that all the broken, damaged, and fallen trees and limbs were immediately cleared from the public right-of-way and sidewalks and streets, and I really appreciate their hard work. The only, and I just got a note, that we had one mudslide at a property on Kavanaugh and that went down the public right-of-way, but it was cleared by public works staff. And our director of community development, our building official, are working with the property owner and inspecting the property to make sure that the erosion control options are put in place to prevent future issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if I, if I can, I want to give a shout-out to Mr. Hardgrove and your crew because as I was driving yesterday on the Campbell and Green Bar, all that down the hill there, there was a huge rock slide, took up half of the... there was a huge rock slide, took up half of the street. And I thought, whoa, this is dangerous. And then as I drove a little bit further, there was a tree, half of a tree on the street. And I thought, wow, this is bad. I should probably report this. I did not. Today, when I was driving down, all cleared, all cleared. And I thought, wow, really on it. Thank you very much to all the crews that have been working, Public Works and all the crews that have been working to make our streets safe and our residents safe. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. If there are no other staff comments, Adam City Clerk, can we move on to the next item?
Our next item is community event announcements. We do not have any cards or callers for this item today. And the following item is adoption of ordinances. Community development regarding, a community development regarding ordinance amending Chapter 9.30 Rental Rights Program, introduced by Brokman, 13024. One ordinance amending Sections 9.30.010, comma 9.30.020, comma 9.30.022, 9.30.033, and 9.30.035. And adding Sections 9.30.040 and 9.30.045 of Title IX of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 relating to the rental rights program. Two, ordinance amending comprehensive citywide fee resolution regarding administrative citation fine amounts to add violations subject to fines and processing fees related to the rental rights program violations.
Okay, thank you. Is there a staff presentation?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, member of city council, there's... No?
No, no staff presentation?
Okay.
Okay.
I stand corrected.
Okay. Usually, we wouldn't when we're adopting an ordinance. But we do have 13 speaker cards. And do we have any callers? Okay, well, we'll start with the speakers who are here in the chamber. And Madam Clerk, if you could, you know, wait about five minutes in. And if we don't have any more callers, we'll just cut it off there, okay? Okay, so we'll start with Sebastian Romero. And you'll be followed by Grace Brands.
Okay. Hello, everyone and councilmembers. I'll be quick because I have a lot to say. Last week, I saw the meeting online, and I was very impressed by the amount of landlords and people arguing against basic rights for tenants. One of the themes they kept bringing was the Tenant Center Report from Music Berkeley. I honestly don't know if they read the whole thing, but this paper talks about housing problems we have in the states. It appears to me that they saw there were 5 to 49 units, small business, and attached to it. But here are some of the highlights I saw in the report. Between 50% and 99% of owners' income comes from rent. And the owners' reason to rent the properties were 40% of retirement and 30% of capital gain. Owners' gross income in 2020, based in the report, was that 30% of them had an income between $175,000 and half a million. And here's a bit one, and I quote from the report. Owners of small multifamily properties were less demographic diverse and had a higher income than the general population. Now I speak as a tenant who's being evicted because of renovation in a building that was bought and sold twice in two months. Here are the papers I got from my new tenant. And after talking with the gentleman right here, I forgot your name, I'm sorry. He told me that I wasn't able to move because he forgot to attach the permits. So now I ask you, why the construction started this week? And I talked to the workers underneath my apartment, and they told me that the construction will take only two weeks. And here's the check that I got from the landlord, half of it, $2,247. That's not even money for a deposit. I leave paycheck to paycheck in the city of Glendale and says, I don't have a disability, and I'm not a single dead, and I'm not an elder. I'm being asked to move for $2,000. I hope you rethink this and stop evictions because of renovations. Or give us a little bit more money so we can move to a safer place with not just $2,000. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Grace Brands, I'm sorry. Grace Brands, and followed by David Geishen.
Good evening, council. Good evening, Mayor. My name is Grace Brands. I am one of the few in this room who has actually experienced one of these no-fall evictions due to substantial renovations. And it's been nearly one year since I've received my first notice to vacate, incorrectly written and incorrectly served from a mom-and-pop landlord, followed by a second incorrect notice before Christmas. I heard the meeting last week, and I have a few thoughts. There's been too much time spent about exceptions and definitions, which may create unintended loopholes, which we need to think about. Second, if rental assistance is too much, how are landlords affording renovations at eight times the rent? It's never audited. We don't do that. I find it curious that the Glendale Association of Realtors curiously brought up a PR team and presented a check to a vulnerable population and then proceeded to present arguments against this ordinance that would help the very populations that they're trying to help. But I hope to hear tonight more about enforcement. We can talk all day about exceptions to these rules, but that misses the point of making sensible policies that we can all live by. The rental rights program is well-intended, but it's currently toothless. And we need to ask if that's by design. Here's why enforcement matters. Back in November, I, along with neighbors in my building, came to this council asking for assistance. Rental rights reviewed my paperwork. They reached out to my landlord, and I really appreciate that. But there was a lack of follow-up. The landlord only took some action after they reached out two weeks later. And then it wasn't even correctly served. If the city simply enforced these, their own policies, I would certainly be living in my current unit today. And since that Friday in November, when I emailed and said, you know, this still isn't correct, no one at the city followed up with me at all. Why is that? What good is any of this today if we can't enforce the existing laws, much less new ones? Enforcement is the key. As the mayor pointed out, our inaction on a limited moratorium on renivictions meant that more than a few Glendale citizens lost their homes in the time between November and now, so that we could wait for more info, wait for more data. And as Councilmember Kosaki, and so aptly summarized, some of this feels just very incomplete. So let's hear from the landlord-tenant, ad hoc tenant committee. Let's hear from the construction experts. Let's have a postmortem with every Glendale tenant who has experienced one of these. Let's hear from evidence-based researchers, like the Princeton Eviction Lab, who noticed that this type of eviction is on the rise. As idealistic as it sounds, I appreciate and I support what Mayor Brokman is saying. Let's find a way to make these repairs and keep the permanent displacement to an absolute minimum as a last resort, not a first one. I'm determined that my experience will not be in vain, that we preserve rights while ensuring responsibility. My voice is here for the tenant in the future. We need a fair process for all rooted in compassion and accountability. We enforce all these kinds of lesser codes in the city with substantially less human impact. Let's enforce this one. Thank you.
Good evening, council. David Geishen from the Apartments Association of Greater Los Angeles. The proposed revisions being discussed today are a far cry from the cleanup that was supposed to be the focus of this red line of the existing just cause and retaliatory eviction ordinance. For the first time tonight, we are seeing a second ordinance for consideration in addition to yet further changes to the original ordinance, including changes offered by staff solely on their own initiative. The goalposts continue to move on this item. And rather than basing sweeping changes on what feels good, these ordinances should be sent back to the ad hoc committee for detailed review and for staff to have additional time to conduct actual data gathering and analysis on each of the impacted groups, including the number of low-income renters, renters with minor children, and renters with disabled minor children. The second ordinance proposed by staff establishes substantial penalties to be imposed upon property owners for any violation of the new rules. As the just cause ordinance has many substantial revisions now, and it seems extremely punitive towards owners, especially for fines never discussed by the ad hoc committee. Nor has staff provided any detailed analysis as to why these specific amounts were chosen for this newly proposed ordinance. We strongly urge the city council to send this proposal back to the ad hoc committee for further review and consideration for refinement by all parties involved. The major changes to the just cause and retaliatory eviction ordinance equally lack any detailed analysis or data regarding the number of renters that will be impacted as qualified tenants. Nor is there any specific information regarding the vast new category of renters with minor children or those with disabled minor children. Changes to this ordinance will impact the entire rental housing industry and thousands of renters as well. The least that the city should require are concrete facts and data to inform their decisions as to how many renters that private property owners will be forced to financially support via relocation fees at double the regular amount, equalling six months' worth of rent plus $4,000. This is a huge financial burden to force upon private citizens, with the vast majority being small business owners and many of whom are retirees relying on their local businesses for their primary support during retirement. Similarly, a detailed analysis should be required to be conducted by staff as to who owns these smaller buildings with 20 or fewer units, if there is an assumption that they are not actually mom-and-pop owners, but rather large corporations. As we know, owners with 5 to 20 units are under a greater financial burden due to the fact that they cannot obtain 30-year mortgages and instead must obtain new mortgages every 5 to 10 years and current prevailing interest rates that have more than doubled over the last several years. If the goal is to support small owners to help keep them in business, providing some of the most affordable rental housing in Glendale, then the number of owners exempted should match the number of renters receiving double relocation fees as qualified tenants. Even among groups, there is currently an utter blindness to parity. Why should all renters with minor children obtain double relocation fees? If the other group are limited to disabled renters, so too should this entirely new category, never before considered by the ad hoc committee, be limited to disabled minor children? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good timing. Just, I just want to clarify. So in the back, you're translating into Spanish, okay? I don't know. Yeah, it is a little, there's like a mumble, but I don't think there's anything we can really do. Oh, we have both. Okay, all right. Okay, dulce, dulce, hombres.
Okay, hello. Thank you for having us today. So I'm here today because I am a member of the Glendale Tenants Union. I'm a really proud member. And I wanted to bring up a couple of anecdotes of some tenants who can't be here. So one tenant that I and other members have been working with, and we've been able to get them really organized, live on Riverdale, she came to speak here. And I want to bring up her landlord. Her landlord's name is Steve Kazarian. Steve Kazarian owns this unit, owns this building. It's eight units, so he is a small landlord. But also, he is your friend, I guess, the landlord's here. And he owns a nightclub in North Hollywood. And there, he practices union busting to the people who work at that club. And recently, because he is trying to evict his tenants so thoroughly, these landlords say that they can't offer relocation assistance. Maybe go talk up to your buddy, and he was able to offer them $30,000 in relocation assistance. Y'all say you can't afford that. You know, obviously, you're not Steve Kazarian. But maybe consider what is going on with some of the landlords who did live in the city of Glendale, who perhaps own multiple properties, own multiple properties outside of the city of Glendale and are evicting their tenants because they want to make more money. I also want to bring up another tenant who isn't able to make it today because she is being evicted, and she has to move out of the city of Glendale. She's actually going to move out of the city of Glendale by the end of this week. Her landlord did follow the proper steps. Her landlord did provide permits. Her landlord did offer the relocation assistance that she was granted. But this is not enough. This is not enough. She told me that she has no money left in her checking account, because of which she had to pay to move out of the city. She's not here today because she's doing her moving procedures in the rain. She's having to move boxes out of her house in the rain right now. And you know, this rain was not what we saw in the news. But you know, obviously, you all can't control the weather. But she's having to do this. And instead, she's asking for people to help her. The Glendale Tenants Union is, you know, doing a kind of fundraiser to support her. So these are just a couple of things. You know, I've been here a couple of times to talk. Tenants are being offered maybe things correctly. They're done by the law, but it simply is not enough. And some landlords show their true sides. Some landlords show that they do have a lot of money, that they can offer it, that this is an obstacle to them. But tenants don't want to leave their homes, and that's okay. Tenants want to stay in the city that they've been living in for more than 30 years. And instead, landlords want to push people out. So I offer these two anecdotes for today. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, very good timing. Please, Alex is next, followed by Romella Aragi.
Hi, I'm here as a tenant in Glendale and also as a member of the Glendale Tenants Union to ask for you all in the city council to agendize four things. One is an immediate moratorium on renivictions or evictions based on renovations. The second thing is a permanent ban on renovations with a right to return for the tenant. There is no reason why, if landlords are waiting so long to make repairs, and then they, you know, decide to just flip a property, there's no reason why people should be losing their homes over these investments. The last thing I want y'all to agendize is a right to counsel in the ordinance. Again, people who are being evicted don't have money. They're low-income most of the time. So they're not going to have the money to get a lawyer, to go through the court system. And very often, because of that, and because court is so intimidating, they'll just take the relocation and they'll leave, even though it's not enough, as we have clearly seen from some of the testimonies. And I just want to say some questions for y'all to think about. Firstly, I want to, you know, not call these landlords mom-and-pop. I want to call them what they are. They are small landlords. And some questions for them, or and some questions for y'all is, how many landlords are really LLCs? Secondly, how many small landlords even live in the city of Glendale? How many landlords who only own four units in Glendale also own more units in other cities? And how can the city find this out? And just more commentary on the whole mom-and-pop thing. Mom-and-pop is not defined by the state, but small landlords is, and that is four units total. So I don't know, a lot of these mom-and-pop landlords, according to the state, are not actually small landlords. Landlords seem to forget the investment in investment properties. Because if you can't afford to maintain your properties, then maybe you shouldn't have gotten into investment properties in the first place, and you should just sell it off. Lastly, why are landlords waiting to make these major renovations? I have the answer for you. It's because they're slumlords. They don't care about the actual habitability of these properties that they own until they want to flip it so that they can pull a profit. Yeah, that's it. I hope y'all agendize these items that I have mentioned because they are very important to a lot of tenants who are facing evictions. In my small time being in the Tenants Union, I've worked with like over 30 people who are going through renivictions. I can pull up the spreadsheets, I can pull up the spreadsheets, but I shouldn't be doing the work for the city. Bye.
Okay, Romella Aragi, followed by, is it Imi Novshadyan?
Yeah, hi, hi, everybody. Actually, I have news here for landlords, and actually, no, I'm going to start with the city. I think that city ordinance doesn't have the power to determine about relocations, relocation fees. And neither do landlords. Here, tenants are the ones that have the power to negotiate, because those are the people that are being evicted. So I can tell this from my experience, but we're working with these people that have been evicted, and yeah, some of them, like as Dulce said, some of them are going like for $30,000 offered by landlords to be, to evict. I just have news for those people that are worried about mom and pop businesses, mom and pop landlords. Yeah, so, so I'm saying that still tenants are in, have the power of negotiation, not the city and not the landlords. Yeah, even I can tell you that some landlords come to me and ask me if I can be a mediator between them and the landlords and the tenants to negotiate the relocation fees. Because even they want to go much, much higher than that offered in that city ordinance. Yeah, just saying that, yeah, I mean, those are the people, those are people that attacking here, not the landlords, not the city. And other thing that is, we need to stop renovations, we need some sort of moratorium for renovations, and we need ad hoc committee to be permanent, we need right to counsel for tenants, and yeah, stop the renovation. And actually, we know, I see some of the bikers here, we don't want, we don't want biker lane on that way to go. We need to avoid that.
I have Novshadyan Imic? Am I saying that right? Novshadyan? Is there a Novshadyan Imic? Well, I'll set it aside, I'll come back to it. I have Vahik Nazari?
We have a translator, no, we haven't, don't we have a translator?
Alan, I'd like to translate for the gentleman.
We have a translator? Okay, you don't want our official translator? Okay?
I'll do my best.
You all know that I'm a resident of the building on Lomita Avenue, which is under the threat of eviction, and we have until the 15th. Until March 15th to leave the premises.
Three units have already been vacated, but 12 units are currently under habitation. We are unable to live in peace right now because although three people have already moved out, but 15 people have come to begin renovations, and there's so much noise, so much banging and chaos, we are unable to go on with our lives. We are unable to get to the bottom of just how this was possible. There are no permits that are being presented, we are unable to contact, get in contact with the developer, they are treating us like we are nobody.
I'm sorry, I have to interrupt. Alan, I do have to note that the translation's not correct, and I want to make sure that our colleagues are getting what the gentleman's actually saying.
Sure. That's why we have a professional translator.
I'm really sorry, Alan, but...
I'd like to finish, but if it's your prerogative, I will try to stick to what he's saying. As opposed to the emotions.
Thus far, it's been, it's been different than what he says, that's all.
It's an impassioned speech, you must concede at least. Go ahead, Sharonaki. No, no, go on, let's just... We tried to negotiate with the construction workers, but we are unable to communicate with them, because they do not speak English, but the point is, we are unable to... The permits were presented after renovations had already begun, suggesting something's We are very thankful for the work that you're doing, of course. We would just like also, if it's possible, at least for someone to be sent so they can see what's going on, so that you could be also in the know. We would like to present evidence in videos, if that's possible, this is a question. Can we provide the flash if not now, then soon?
Not now.
No, he might, but... on unfortunately. We would really like if you could, we plead you, to send someone to see it for yourself, or if not, to see it for yourselves, then to see the video evidence of it again. There's a lot of water damage right now. I'm very thankful for the opportunity of speaking here, and again, I ask if you could send someone soon, that would be wonderful. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you so much. And something you would like to add?
I mean, he did ask for an inspector to go out because of the leaking, and apparently they've tried to contact the management. They didn't get notices that the renovation was going to start. I don't know if our code enforcement can take a look at what the living situation is in that building right now.
Mayor, council members, our inspectors have actually already been out to the site. There were concerns raised about whether or not the construction, the renovation work was beyond the scope of the permits, so the inspectors have been out there, they have checked the work, and it does match the permits that were issued. We can send somebody back out there to check regarding the leak issues, but otherwise, the work that is going on is within the scope and purview of the permits that were issued.
All right. Susanna Adamian? Is there a Susanna Adamian? Okay, I'll set it aside, I'll come back. Is that, is she coming forward? Okay, you are Susanna?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Thank you, you have three minutes.
I've lived in that building for 27 years, and I don't imagine how I can leave this building right now. And they're already remodeling the house next to ours, and you cannot go in and out. What can I say? I'm just here to ask, what solutions do you guys provide? Are we going to be able to stay in this building or not? One more question, I live here with section eight. Will they give me permission again to live here with section eight? That's all, thank you.
Okay, I think these are questions that should be followed up by with staff. She has a question specifically about section eight. I assume that's the same building, the Lomita building?
Mr. Mayor, it's the same building, and she has been contacted by staff. Every tenant in that building has been contacted and staff and Armenian Relief Society had worked with a handful of them that qualified for emergency vouchers. So they have been in contact, and they know who to call, who to contact if they have any questions.
Okay, okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. And I want to thank all the tenants who are here from my building, we're here every And only three tenants were able to find, were able to relocate to new apartments, and they were able to find it with great difficulties. They tried to come here and fight for their rights, however, they are elderly and they had to finally give in and find the different solutions for themselves. We've talked about all the difficulties presented by our landlord. And if the main reason for the eviction was the poor condition of the apartment building that we are in, we, you will, we, right now, it's even worse where considering the storm So there has been, basically, because of the rain, there has been a downpour from the top level into the next levels all the way to the bottom level, to a point where one of the tenants' houses, the lamp on the ceiling has turned to an aquarium. And now, they're doing work that might harm the current tenants in this building, stuff that could relate to chemicals, asbestos, or any other dangers that might be present? Who will be able to answer to the tenants in regards to all the dangers and the difficulties presented at the current moment? And if the opposite, if the current situation does not present any danger to the tenants, why does, why does the landlord have to evict all of us in order to perform the renovations? I'll do my best to translate. So since November, we've been coming here and presenting our cases, and we've been trying to reach a medium where we can meet with our landlords and try to figure out the best solution that we have to our current situation. If these renovations can be done while we are home, or if there's any other way that we can basically find a solution and we can all be satisfied by the end, that's the one thing we're asking for right now. And because right now, the renovations are taking place, and we are unaware whether the conditions we're living here are affecting our health or not, and we would like to know And I want to thank City Council for helping most of the residents with emergency vouchers. But this should not permit landlords to evict tenants from their house. We shall first have a house, so then we can abide by the laws that you are presenting And it will be very difficult to find a new apartment with this current program. Thank you.
I mean, we've got, we're getting a number of these questions about the conditions and I guess you say you did send an inspector out, would it be possible to, or did you check on these specific allegations?
Mayor, council members, we did send inspectors to go and make sure that the work was in line with the permits and obviously being done to the expectations and standards of Building Safety Division. We will have someone go back out there this week, since we're not hearing commentary about potential impacts from the rain and other, other consequence of the storm, if you will, but we will send somebody back out there this week to take a look.
Okay, okay, thank you. Matt Taylor. Matt Taylor.
All right. I just wanna echo what a lot of other people from the Glendale Tenants Union have been saying tonight. That, that we should not, we should not be... Sorry. Sorry, I just wanted to echo a lot of what everyone else from Glendale Tenant Union has been saying tonight. That we should look very, very closely at, you know, banding about the definition of mom-and-pop landlords and small landlords, and that even if, like has been said, even if we were to define small landlords as having four units, you know, I feel like that definition wouldn't necessarily apply if we were to discover they had units outside Glendale, and from what I've seen, we have no way of determining that, so it would be a useless definition anyway. And as has also been stated, it seems like we're spending a lot of time trying to find ways to let landlords out of the regulations that we're proposing, rather than enforcing the ones that we have. And I just wanna take this opportunity to point out that rental properties aren't investment, and it's make, it is a political choice by a government to protect investments over people's lives and people's ability to have a roof over their heads. And if we're deciding that it's more important to protect an investment, that says a lot about us as a city. In addition, I, I fully, I fully agree that we should not be having any sort of rent evictions, as they're called. I mean, you know, like, as, as landlords, you're getting rental income over the whole lifetime of the unit. You should be making repairs over that time. And, you know, if you're, if you're wait, if you're waiting long enough that you have to evict your tenants in order to do the, in order to do repairs and renovations, you know, that makes me wonder what you were doing with the rest of the money the whole time you had them as tenants. And there shouldn't, and it should, it shouldn't be a reason to, renovations should not be a reason to get tenants out of a, you know, a place that, a place that they're living. You know, we could do it as, you know, temporary, they have, you know, temporary, uh, living out, yeah, in like a hotel or something, but there should be a, you know, right to re-inhabit the unit after renovation. With a rent eviction, you know, they could claim that the work's gonna take as long as they want to, in order to get the permit and the person kicked out with, and without the, without the right of bringing the tenant back in after a renovation, it's a blank check to landlords to evict people and flip units. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Javier Beltran. I am the Deputy Director at Housing Rights Center. We provide service, fair housing services here in the city of Glendale. And, and you do, we do, we do our best to combat discrimination claims in the city of Glendale and throughout LA and Ventura County. I'm here to, to discuss and provide points on, feedback points on the proposed exemption of properties with nine or, or fewer units, or what they would consider their definition of mom-and-pops. Most jurisdictions with tenant protections use building, the building date and/or use a multi-unit residential building qualification as a way of defining what is eligible for a rental unit, not necessarily if it's categorized as a mom-and-pop and then based on the number of units. So that's just something to consider. Most jurisdictions consider a mom-and-pop category for reduction of relocation as part of any kind of relocation payment to tenants if they have to pay that amount. And it makes sense since if it's considered a smaller landlord or a mom-and-pop landlord paying a reduced amount compared to other landlords who have other resources in order to pay the relocation. Only nine units in Glendale. I wouldn't necessarily just categorize it as a mom-and-pop. I think somebody mentioned a small landlord, perhaps, but here in the city of Glendale, I would consider that a multimillion-dollar business, considering the housing prices in Glendale, that if you have a unit of nine, of a building of nine units or more, or less, that's, is gonna range in upwards of five million or more, perhaps, in today's housing market. So something to consider on that as well. Also, in this situation, the exception swallows the rule, and the, well, the exemption swallows the rule here. Thirty-four percent of impacted units would disproportionately affect vulnerable tenants, since smaller units are generally rented by low-income, poor minorities, and seniors, and these folks are the, would be the most affected by this exemption, and they would have less protections than those who would have, that would fall out of that category. So, so I ask to just keep the rules simple and keep the existing exemptions from, from the tenant protections, and only have mom, only have mom-and-pop categories consideration for relocation in the sense of reducing the amounts and not exempting these whole swaths of owners from tenant protections. And having thirty-four percent of the units protected for one, that have protections from one year, and then have those protections revoked in another can lead to disproportionately amount of, of tenants being not protected and have less protections, and very, and lead to a very confusing situation. So I think for now, and also I think just to consider, you are further considering the number of units, perhaps greater impact on, on the community in Glendale, who would, who's affecting them before going on with putting some sort of mom-and-pop exemption. Thank you.
Thank you. Shont Narhadiya.
Good evening, Mayor Brotman, members of the City Council, city attorney and staff. I appreciate the opportunity to speak in front of you again tonight. My name is Shont Narhadiya, and I was raised in the city of Glendale. And I currently work for a local family-owned housing provider in the city. I can proudly say that we have not evicted any residents for substantial remodel. While I have many reservations with the language proposed into ordinance, I will focus my discussion on two specific areas, which are the same ones I focused on last time. First, relocation fees that are triggered by a no-fault eviction from compliance with a government order. Should the landlord be required to pay the same relocation fees to comply with a government's order as for a substantial remodel? The former is an action mandated by the government, whereas the latter is a voluntary election made by the landlord. If a landlord is required to comply with a government's order, it is likely that the landlord is already going to incur a substantial amount of compliance costs. And to have to pay relocation fees as proposed into ordinance, on top of that, would create an undue hardship for the landlord. It is unreasonable to expect the landlord to incur these costs, and the city should consider revising the relocation fee only in these types of situations to conform with the relocation fees that are currently provided under AB 1482, which is one month of the tenant's rent then in effect. Secondly, the proposed language does not address reduction in services that result from landlord complying with a government order. Should the landlord be penalized for reducing services at the building that result from having to comply with a government order? For example, pandemic-related suspension of services to shared building amenities, such as swimming pool, fitness room, and other common area amenities, or even a reduction in parking resulting from compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. I would suggest creating a carve-out in the ordinance for a reduction in services that result from the landlord's compliance with a government order. I thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Greg Astori.
I put my glasses so I can see you all better. My name is Greg Astori, and I'm here on behalf of Glendale Association of Realtors. I am here to encourage you to adopt the ordinance as you introduced it last Tuesday. The four of you decided as a compromise on a nine-unit and below exemption from the ordinance. I think that's appropriate, though I would have wished that the staff memo that I just got before the council meeting would have been available to us way before that. Now, I'm gonna give them the benefit doubt that they didn't finish it on time, but I will address your staff report. The paragraph prior to the last paragraph states that unless you require a residency requirement for nine units and below for one reason or other, that will increase or be, or contribute to a substantial eviction rate. Now, I wanna know, what is that based on? Is there a study that this staff has done that shows that if you are a resident owner of an eight, seven, four, two-unit building, your rate of eviction or your chances of eviction is less? I'd like to find that out. Secondly, when you talk about, and, and this is, again, I go back to the memo from, for the staff, that they believe that the most prevalent form of definition for mom-and-pop is one to four units. So I have a suggestion for you. Adopt the ordinance the way that you have introduced it. Include the one and four, one through the four, without residency requirement, and bring back the issue of five to nine units with the items A through I of the additional recommendations that your staff had made to do with the pre-inspection and, and, which, by the way, Glendale Realtors agreed with at least five out of the nine. With that, I'll keep it short, thank you.
Thank you. Pamela Augustine, followed by Maria Hernandez.
Good evening. Is this on? Yeah, okay. Good evening, council members. My name is Pamela Augustine. I am a member of the Glendale Tenants Union, and I am also a stay-housed LA County Organizer and a rent stabilization LA County Commissioner. So I see every day, both in my day work, my volunteer work, or my commissioner work, issues between tenants and landlords. It is evident today, based on who has commented, that seniors in Glendale are being pushed out, and that vulnerable families in Glendale are being pushed out. Countywide, Stay-Housed LA knows that 71,000 evictions were filed, and only 5,000 of those evictions had legal representation. Where do you think those tenants went for assistance? They came to the Glendale Tenants Union, local tenants' union, or local community-based organizations. We are doing the work that the cities refuse to do, or choose or ignore to do. We need you to take action and protect these seniors right here that you've heard from today. We need strong relocation assistance. We need strong relocation assistance, just cost protections, rent stabilization ordinance, a right to counsel. We need all of this, and we cannot wait for it. That's why I'm asking now for all the tenants here today to stand up, for all the people facing eviction to stand up, for all the people who have ever faced an illegal eviction or harassment to stand up, for allies to stand up. And we need you, and that includes all of you. I'm surprised none of you stood up. Because if you really wanna keep your community whole, we wouldn't even be discussing carving out any protections. A tenant is a tenant if they don't own their unit or their housing. These protections should not be conditioned. They need to apply to all residents who rent. And I yield the rest of my minute to Maria Padilla.
What's that? Well, she, we don't have a card from her.
I only spoke for two minutes, and they refused to take it, and we've seen that people yield time to other people.
We've got three, and then we've got on the phone, how many?
I mean, I can use the rest of my time to speak about her case.
We set a cutoff, and I, if we open it up, you know, we gotta open it up for everybody. So, why don't you just finish, finish your time? No, 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 just finish your time.
All right, I'll finish my time. First of all, Maria Padilla is facing a re eviction. She came to us. No legal service provider under the Stay-Housed LA County system was able to represent her. They are at capacity. What did we do? We prepared three UD binders for her. Legal evictions are rough. Illegal evictions, such as the one she has faced and now is facing a legal one, are inhumane, they're quick. A woman like her, who has lived here for more than 20 years and raising a 17-year-old son, should not be facing this type of eviction. She wants to stay here. She wants to continue raising her son here. But day in and day out, Glendale Tenants Union represents residents like her in court. How do we do that? We know our rights, we give them that information, and then they self-represent. But this is not sustainable. This is why we need a right to counsel, and we need you to stand for everybody that rents. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Maria Hernandez.
Buenas noches, concejales.
Good evening, council members.
Mi nombre es Maria Hernandez.
My name is Maria Hernandez.
Y estoy aquí nuevamente.
And I am here once again.
Para pedirles.
To ask you.
Que por favor paren los desalojos.
To please stop evictions.
Los, los dueños.
The landlords.
Son super mentirosos algunos.
Are extremely lying, some of them.
Diciendo que van a sacar a uno para reubicar a un familiar.
Telling us that they're going to evict us to bring in a family member.
Cuando es una gran mentira.
When it's a big lie.
Por parte de mi rentador.
My landlord.
Conozco a muchísima de su familia.
I know plenty of his family members.
Y gracias a Dios.
And thank God.
Todos son propietarios.
They are all landlords.
Ella me está desalojando.
She is evicting me.
Para aumentar la casa más alta de precio.
To increase the price of housing.
Yo les quiero preguntar a todos los que están aquí sentados en frente de mí.
I would like to ask every single one of you who are sitting in front of me here today.
Que si ustedes aguantarían vivir casi cinco años sin agua caliente.
If you would stand to live five years without warm water.
Porque el 19 de, de enero del 2019.
Because in January 19 of 2019.
Llamé a los bomberos.
I called the fire department.
Porque se desplomó el boiler de abajo.
Because the, the boiler had a break on the pipeline from underneath.
Y me inundé la cocina y el cuarto de lavandería.
And my kitchen and my laundry room got flooded.
Dos veces le dije a la señora que es la mamá la que me rentó.
I told the lady twice, which is the lady, the one that leases me the place.
Pero como estaba enferma, nunca hizo caso.
But since she was sick, she never really took care of it.
En este mes ella cumplió tres años que falleció.
This year, it will be three years that she passed away.
Yo le dije a la hija, como tres meses después de que la mamá falleció.
I talked to the daughter three months after she passed away.
Que el boiler no servía.
That the boiler wasn't functioning.
Su contestación fue.
And her answer was.
Porque no me habías dicho.
How come you didn't tell me before?
Y le contesté.
To which I said to her.
Porque siempre tenía el contacto con tu mamá.
Because I had direct contact with your mom.
Son tres años, y ella tampoco lo hizo caso.
It's been three years since she has not listened either.
El 20 de abril del año pasado.
On April 20th of last year.
Ella me pidió la casa.
She asked me for the unit.
Yo le dije que no me pidiera la casa porque no tenía donde moverme.
I asked her to not please ask me for the unit or the house because I had nowhere to go.
Ella salió con dos mil dólares en la mano.
She came out with $2,000 in her hand.
Y me daba 30 días para salirme.
And she was giving me 30 days to move out.
No quise recibir el dinero ni los papeles.
I didn't wanna take the money or the papers.
Porque le dije que no tenía donde irme.
Because I told her I didn't have anywhere to go.
Desde ese día.
Since that day.
Empezó mi depresión.
My depression started.
Anduve preguntándole a mis vecinos.
I've been asking around my neighbors.
Si sabían de algún apartamento.
If they knew of an apartment.
Y una amiga me dijo.
And a friend of mine told me.
Hay grupos de inquilinos unidos.
There's tenant unions.
Únete.
Why don't you join them?
Para que no te saquen de ahí porque es injustamente. El 26 de septiembre de 2021.
On 26 of September of 2021.
Perdí a mi mamá.
I lost my mother.
Y yo le pagué a ella su renta exactamente.
And I also paid my rent in full.
Yo les pregunto a ustedes, ella está en su derecho de sacarme cuando no le fallado en un mes de renta.
And I ask all of you, is she in her right to evict me when I had paid my rent in full?
Y me tuvo casi cinco años sin agua caliente.
And she had me almost five years without hot water?
Ella es, ella es propietaria más o menos como de 24 casas y apartamentos.
She's a landlord of about 24 houses and apartments.
Por dinero, no, no me está sacando.
She's not kicking me out for money.
Ella me está sacando por ser injusta.
She's kicking me to be unfair.
Porque ella tiene posibilidades de más dinero de otras viviendas.
Because she has more money capabilities from other housing units.
Ella me tiene en una corte.
She has me in court now.
Y aún así.
And even then.
Ella me sigue hostigando.
Repetimos.
Ella me tiene en una corte.
She has me in court.
Y todavía ella me sigue hostigando.
She's still harassing me.
Señora, le doy dos semanas para que saque la lavadora y la secadora.
Telling me, lady, you have two weeks to get the washer and the dryer out.
Señora, le doy una semana para que saque la lavadora y secadora.
Lady, you have two weeks to get the laundry, the washer and the dryer out.
Yo sé que en la corte vamos a decir la verdad.
I know that in court, we're gonna tell the truth.
Me gustaría que la investigaran en tanta, en tanta mentira que ella está.
And I will lie to her for her to be investigated in all the lies that she said.
Y yo estoy hablando lo que es la verdad.
And I'm telling what is the truth.
Sí me gustaría que me ayudaran.
I will lie for you to help me.
Y que también pararan mal los desalojos porque.
And to please stop the evictions.
No hay vida.
Because there's no life.
Va a ser un año.
It will be a year.
Que yo no duermo.
That I don't sleep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. You have Ms. Simonian? Is there, I can't tell if it's Arminay Simonian? Is there? No? Is there? Oh, okay.
Good evening, everyone.
Yes, I'm sure my case is on the line. I'm emergency voucher, I'm.
If you remember, I came last time for my emergency voucher.
Yes, I'm. I submitted my papers again, and they said that I do not have status. Hi, yes, I'm. 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 Yes, I'm.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we will move on to our callers.
We have four callers. Our first caller is Robert. Robert, you're on air. You have three minutes. I will go to the next caller. The next caller is John Garrow. John, you're on air. You have three minutes. Okay. Our next caller is Matthew Buck. Matthew, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Brotman and council members. Matthew Buck, Vice President of Public Affairs for the California Apartment Association. We represent a wide range of housing providers and industry-supporting businesses who are committed to promoting a fair and equitable housing policy in Glendale. I want to thank city council, city staff, and the Ad Hoc Committee for streamlining and improving the rental rights program from where it was previously. CA also appreciates city staff for including us throughout the process. We have heard all the ideas, and there has been a substantial amount of time for review and discussion on this issue. Council voted 4-0 last week to approve the amended ordinance. This shows council firmly agrees this is the best version to adopt. We respectfully urge council to vote once again for 0 to approve the ordinance without additional changes. It's time to move forward. Please continue to engage with CA on these issues to ensure that Glendale avoids unintended consequences regarding its affordable housing supply. Thank you for your consideration.
Our next caller is George Garrow. George, you're on air. You have three minutes. George?
Hello?
Jorge?
Yes.
Yep. Go ahead.
Good. Am I on the council here?
Yes, you, you may speak. Go ahead.
Very good. Good evening, Glendale City Council. My name is George Garrow. I have a bachelor's degree in economics, a Juris Doctorate degree in law. We practice real estate law together, my father and I, and we are glad to talk to you tonight. One change that I would like to propose to the Glendale ordinance is the following. The landlord must give a one-year lease to any new tenant or existing tenant as of the adoption of the ordinance, and prior to the expiration of that lease, must offer an extension of the lease for one year. What if, for an innocent reason, that landlord forgets to give the option to extend the lease by one year? Well, according to the Glendale Municipal Code 9.30.025, subsection F, the last sentence, such notices of rent increase thereafter are null and void, which seems to be quite a draconian remedy and penalty. Now, let's go back to what's the purpose of these ordinances. The purpose of the ordinance is to protect tenants, not to punish landlords. I think that there should be a willfulness requirement or a bad faith requirement before the rent increase be null and void. For example, later in the ordinance, a treble damages provision requires that the landlord be acting in bad faith before the tenant can recover treble damages. A similar requirement should be implemented in the ordinance. Furthermore, the implementation of the administrative citation system will provide an additional alternative remedy to the city and tenants for landlords who are failing to comply with the Glendale Tenant Rights Ordinance. The consequences of such a strict liability provision as currently contained in the ordinance is the following. Number one is that a owner who innocently fails to comply will be punished. And number two, a buyer of a building will not know whether the provision has been complied with or not, thereby chilling the transactions and business within the city of Glendale. I also want to thank the council for taking a reasonable approach to regulate no-fault, just-cause evictions, such as a substantial renovation, and also to not waste the city's resources on bureaucracy.
Thank you, George. Your time is up.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Our next caller is Robert. Robert, you're on air. You have three minutes. Okay. Our next caller is John Garrow. John, you're on air. You have three minutes. Are you there?
Yes, thank you very much.
Go ahead.
Mayor and council members, I appreciate the time. I want to encourage the council to keep in mind the macro picture. Business in Glendale needs assistance. Right now, controlling or tightening rent and property control is not good for business in general. There are millions of square feet of vacant office space available in this town. This hurts the supporting small businesses. It results in lower city tax and less revenue overall. So keep in mind and take notice that there are many vacancies for apartments. Rents are soft, the economy is slow, and landlords have to offer concessions in order to attract more occupancy. Landlords also have the burden of refinancing loans that are now coming due with a higher interest rate, which equates to higher monthly payments. So I applaud the council for not implementing harsh rules and regulations such as a rent board, registration, moratoriums, or rent caps beyond 7% or lower than 7%. All of these factors result in a higher cost for the city to supervise and implement. We need to keep business active and locate businesses in our town. We want our city to thrive and prosper for all. The voice of reason dictates a fair approach. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you. Our final caller, again, Robert. Robert, you're on air. You have three minutes. Are you there? I have tried to call on Robert three times, so we will drop the call.
Given that we had a couple of callers. We've been going over an hour. Okay. I think we'll just leave it there. Okay. Okay, that closes off the communications portion of this. Let's hear from Dias. Any comments?
I'll let my colleagues go first.
Any questions for staff?
I have comments.
Okay. Let me, let me, I do have a question or two before we get into that. One question, there was the, the reference to the, the issue of forgetting to offer a second one-year lease at the end of the first year of tenancy. Didn't we address that in this?
We did. We, the committee did come back with some suggestions on that, and so there is an amendment to, to that. I think it's a requirement that they do it one more time, but beyond that, if the tenant rejects it, there's no requirement to keep coming back unless there's a mutual request to restart the annual lease process.
Could you perhaps check that? Because I think what we did is we said that at the end of the first year of tenancy, it's not incumbent on the landlord to offer the, the additional one-year lease, that the tenant can ask for it. And if the tenant asks, then the landlord is required. So the burden is not on the landlord to offer it. So that issue of forgetting to offer it is not, is not an issue.
So it's in section G of 9.30.025. And it says, for future offers, as of the effective date of the ordinance enacting this section, the requirement to offer future written lease renewal shall be in effect for one full year after the anniversary of the rent increase date. After such time, any time a tenant rejects an offer of a written lease or written lease renewal with a minimum term of one year, the landlord shall not be required to subsequently offer a one-year lease. Unless and until the tenant requests a lease offer, in which case the parties may negotiate the terms of the new lease, which shall be substantially similar in the terms of the month-to-month offer."
So, the landlord is obligated to proactively offer?
One more time.
If it's been accepted. But I think that, so the current ordinance used to provide every year landlord had to provide it regardless of whether or not the tenant was accepting it. This says, "Once the tenant accepts, rejects it, subsequent years, they don't have to keep offering it."
That's right.
That's the change.
Okay. For some reason, I thought we had gotten rid of that because we recognized this problem that sometimes somebody forgets, and then a rent increases null and void, and then there's all kinds of chaos that takes place. So, I thought we said that, okay, maybe I'm wrong. I thought we addressed it.
So, we did, we did delete the part that talks about, "Upon the first date, the landlord notices a rent increase after the first year." We deleted the part where we are requiring the landlord to keep going back and offering the one-year lease. If they are in a one-year lease situation, then they'll continue to do that. It doesn't default to a month-to-month.
Right. But at the end of that first year, they have to proactively remember to offer a one-year lease.
One last time.
One time.
And if there's, and if there's no renewal, then they don't continually have to offer that.
Okay. And we might, I think we discussed this last week, but the point that the gentleman makes about a carve-out for repairs or reductions in service that are due to government order, did you address that?
Yes, that's under Section H of 9.30.030. I'm sorry, it's under Section J and 9.30.030. The title to that is "Evictions." And J says, "The landlord seeks in good faith to recover possession of the rental unit in order to comply with the government agency's order to vacate or any other order that necessitates the vacating of the building, housing, or rental unit as a result of a violation of this code, or the Glendale Building and Safety Code, or any other provision of law." So, essentially, it means that if a landlord has broken the law, such as setting up an illegal unit, has allowed the unit to fall into disrepair, under those circumstances, it's through no fault of the tenant, and this is a fairly common provision that you'll find in rent stabilization ordinances and just cause eviction ordinances. If the tenant has done nothing wrong but continued to live in the apartment, and the landlord has not kept up with the, with either the repairs, or alternatively has built an illegal unit, and now the government, there's an order for them to vacate the unit, then the tenant would be offered the, would have to leave and would be offered the relocation as a part of that.
Are there other circumstances where there would be a government order, let's say, on a seismic retrofit? Or the gentleman mentioned parking for ADA. I wasn't quite sure what that was. Are there circumstances where through no kind of fault of the landlord or the tenant, there's a government ordered to make some repairs that require an eviction?
And what about that? Okay, so I think Cipan is pointing out to 9.30.045, the rent reduction for service reduction that is different than the eviction component. So, to the extent that a tenant rented a unit and with the expectation that the rental value also included parking, for example, and now the landlord has to take that away, there should be a comparable reduction in the rent for taking away services.
Okay. Okay. But there's not a scenario that you can think of where there's a government order that requires a major renovation?
And?
I can only think of maybe a mandate to do seismic retrofits on these soft-story buildings or something like that.
Even then, an eviction would not be necessitated by government, by government order. So, we would not require that the tenants vacate the unit.
Okay, but it might be a substantial remodel that, that would cross the threshold in terms of the amount of time it takes to do it, the amount of money that's involved, no? Do we, are we familiar with any scenarios like that?
That would only come into effect if they utilized that requirement then to evict the tenant, but the government order would not force the eviction. They can, they can certainly do that renovation at whatever threshold without evicting the tenant.
Okay. I just kind of wanted to address these two points because.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to address the gal that came up from the Los Angeles Commission about the legal, she mentioned, let's see, what was it? The legal, having legal action, available help to the tenants. And that's one of the considerations that you're bringing back in a couple of weeks, that we do have legal aid and representation of some kind for the renters, correct?
Yes, that's correct, Councilmember Devine.
Yeah, yeah, that is coming. Other comments?
Some comments.
During the last meeting, I had requested stats on the, on what's considered small business or mom-and-pop shops as it relates to the landlord owners. And I'm not putting this on staff. I recognize that our meeting was on Tuesday. Agendas come out on Thursday, and there's no way that you would actually be able to do a proper analysis and comparison with other cities within that timeframe. But we got that memo yesterday at 6:10 PM. We had been in meetings today, starting at 3:00 PM. It doesn't give us any opportunity to both look on our own, but also didn't give you the opportunity to come back with additional data comparing cities. So, I had noted at the last meeting that I wanted to see those numbers. I recognize that you put something together, and in speaking, some staff, you know, it was mentioned that it's kind of all over the place, but when we get reports for other things that comes to council, we actually get a comparison of like, here's what other cities actually include. And your memo, if I may, your memo pointed to some, and then it pointed to things like in New York and so forth, whereas these aren't the type of comparisons that we usually do when we're talking about our own ordinances, right? And I'm looking for nearby areas and not just rent stabilization programs, but what are some other programs that have to do with protecting renters that may be having certain carve-outs for four units, five units, nine units, and whatever it may be. And so, I know that there was a time crunch. I think my frustration more is that, at the very least for me, I wanted to see that data before making a decision, and this item for me shouldn't have come today. It should have given you time to put that together for me to be able to make a sound decision. And so, I'm going to preface it with that. I am still interested in getting the statistics on number of low-income. How many of these units that we have are actually individuals and LLCs? And I know you don't need to do 100%, but being able to have some sort of measuring stick of, you know, if it's four to five units versus five to nine, are they owned by LLCs? Are they owned by corps? I mean, these are data points that can easily be pulled up, right? And I did raise this, again, during the last meeting. I think some of this were complicating a lot. It's, you know, if I were to put it on this giant board, it would be like if then, and, you know, all over the place, and I would look for something that's much more simple. I do take issue with the fact that low-income families or individuals that don't have any children are not protected. I said this during the last meeting. A one-income household is more vulnerable than a two-income household. The reasoning that staff had provided for minor children, again, was because it needed additional time for the relocation. And for me, that point was made when we were discussing whether we go 30 days, 45 days, or 90 days, not when it's a qualified, can, a qualified tenant carve-out. And so, I still feel like I have issues with single-income households being left out. I think there's a part in me that feels like it's discriminatory against people that don't have children or cannot have children. They do fall into that vulnerable category. And so, if there are comments that staff wants to make to respond to some of my questions, and I know that you've been at this for a very long time, and I know I keep coming back with more, but.
But we're happy to respond. With regard to the LLCs versus individual owners, that data just isn't available to us outside of having some sort of a, an inventory that we send out to landlords and ask that they self-report. And that's a matter that's come up before the council in the past, and, and it's been rejected. And so, there's really no mechanism for staff to look up individual parcels to determine if it's owned by an individual or an LLC. I suppose we could do that, but it's 53,000 units, and identifying a sampling would not be effective. With regard to the comparisons for other agencies, we actually do have a PowerPoint we can show you if you'd like.
I would like to see it. Yeah, I would like to see it.
I mean, we're here. Let's do it. And while we're waiting for that, there's a dance studio downstairs.
There is.
There's this.
It's like.
I hear this thumping. It's very disturbing. You hear it? I think it's right here.
Mayor, Councilmember Sotrian, I believe this is the comparison you're looking for. This isn't every city in Glendale, obviously, but this is some major cities around the area, some bigger cities, county, city, San Francisco, San Jose. Majority of cities only exempt single-family homes, owner-occupied duplexes, sometimes duplexes in the case of Santa Monica, owner-occupied three or four units. The only other agency that exempts nine or below was Claremont, but Claremont doesn't have their own rent protection or rent control or just cause eviction. They go based off the state. They adopted the state ordinance, and they just added the caveat of nine or less units. But even in their case, they have a limited number of rental units. And I believe in their actual ordinance, they might be referencing to condominiums. I've tried to call them and speak with them, but I haven't been able to get a hold of them. But outside of that agency, majority of other agencies only exempt single-family homes, condos, and duplexes here and there.
That's for the rent stabilization specifically?
Rent stabilization, eviction protections. I believe since the state law passed, most of them reverted to whatever the state laws' exemptions were, which is close to Hawkins, and owner-occupied duplexes.
Right. I think most cities have gone, I think what staff's saying, have gone this route. A lot of them, like, these are, have a rent stabilization or rent control. We're kind of in the middle, and then most everybody else just affirms the state. So, that's why if you want somebody, a metric that's exactly like we have, it's going to be hard to find because we, we're kind of in that middle space between the rent control districts and those that just defer to the state.
A related question. South Pasadena recently passed a prohibition on rent evictions. Did they do a carve-out? You know? Okay.
Mayor Brofman, I don't believe so, but I think they were working on an ordinance, so I'm not sure if that ordinance is complete.
I think, I think that they were, they passed that while they were working on something. I don't know if they actually did something permanent yet.
Yeah, they did pass something permanent, but it, they said that they were going to come back in six months to review it. So, it was, they just wanted to get something in place to prevent, you know, the ongoing evictions, but then the intent was to come back and potentially make some changes. That's fine. I mean, I was, I'm just curious. Any other, are there comments? Any other comments? Because I do have some, but I want to hear from my colleagues first.
I have another question with respect to the fines that have been attached. What's our process for educating or informing landlords of the changes?
Councilmember Sotrian, we brought the marketing plan for rental rights program a few meetings ago. We would basically piggyback on that. So, whatever, if this ordinance passes and we begin marketing the new changes, we'd include that as part of the new changes.
And this is noting that it would be in effect in 30 days after its passage, right? And so, is 30 days going to be enough for you guys to educate everyone?
It's enough to, Councilmember Sotrian, it's enough to get started, send out mailers, flyers, informing them of the changes. We can have a quick flyer that references the webpage. So, instead of doing an extensive flyer that includes everything, we can have them call us or link to the webpage, and then following months do something bigger where it includes all the changes in a mailer.
I think that's all I have for now.
I, I know last week, I was eager to see us do something rather than just let this continue to carry on because I am concerned about the fact that evictions are going on every day. And so, I, we had a discussion here, and I know between Councilmember Najarian, Councilmember Devine, and myself, we, we settled on kind of this compromised position of nine units or below. I learned, I mean, there are a couple of things I learned, and I actually can't support that now. I'm sorry, Councilmember Najarian.
I'm in total agreement, so go ahead.
What I learned, what I, what didn't click last week was that if we were to do that, we're actually reducing protections for about 14,000 units in Glendale. The reason being is that our current ordinance are, the ordinance that gives that relocation assistance if a rent increase exceeds 7%, that only excludes duplexes and single families. The way this ordinance is now structured, people in units of nine and below would not even be eligible for that relocation assistance if there's an increase over 7%. So, I didn't realize I was negotiating something that took us backwards, and for that reason, I couldn't, I couldn't support this. The other thing is, during the briefing, I was told that a carve-out of nine and below basically takes about a third of all rental units out of our ordinance, an entire third, about 17,000 units out of 53,000. And as I thought about that, I also thought about the fact that what we're trying to do here is we're trying to discourage people from rent evicting their tenants. We're not, we're trying to encourage people to find ways to do the work around the tenant, maybe move the tenant out for a short period of time into a motel or into another unit in the building that might be vacant, or something so that the work can be done, because we want the work to be done. Now, hold on. Yeah, the clapping doesn't help. We want the work to get done, right? We don't want buildings to fall into disrepair. But we don't want to, we don't want to displace people while that work is being done. Sometimes, I'm sure it's, it's not possible because it's a very major project, but I, I believe in talking to the people in South Pasadena who spent a lot of time looking at this, their feeling is that in the vast majority cases, there is a way to keep the tenant in place, and most of the rent evictions are not about doing the renovation. They're about a building that gets flipped and somebody that wants to get rid of the tenants so that they can bring it back up to market. I get it from a financial perspective, but they want to bring the building back up to market and rent it out. It's not about the repairs. So, that's why I've now come back to the feeling that I don't, I don't think we should carve out at all, but, but I could live with, you know, if we just stuck with what we have in our current ordinance, which is single fam, I'm sorry, yeah, single family and duplexes are not part of this set of protections, but everything else is, that's now where I am, and I know that that kind of blows up our.
Yeah, it kind of blows it. At the last second, I mean, I would have appreciated some sort of heads-up on that, and I take issue with that.
I know. I know you're not going to agree.
It's not a matter of agreeing. It's a matter of when you make a complete flip on your position. You don't do it after the ordinance been introduced, and we're almost ready to take votes on it, Mr. Mayor.
I learned.
That's not good government.
Well, whatever it is, I don't want to do something that I think is going to dial back the protections that we have in place. And that's what I learned is going to happen. So, change of heart, I know it's.
So, let me ask you this. You talked about two different types of instances where relocation fees would be exempted from. One is the rent increase of over 7%, correct? The other is the renovation. In an attempt to again compromise, which my position last week was a compromise, if we kept the rent increase exemption at the current definition, which is single and duplex, but did the renovations? And listen, these renovations are to keep the housing stock clean, safe, efficient. You know, there's a lot that goes into that, and I think we have to encourage an upgrade and a, you know, a freshening of our housing stock because when we don't, we hear complaints, Ms. Mofcesian, don't forget about her, complaining about the deferred maintenance, which was causing problems. We send staff after it. So, if you would like to consider the compromise of the 7% or more increase in rent shall only be exempted for the condo and the duplex, but the renovation eviction at eight units, eight units and below, I'm even coming down off nine.
How about seven?
No.
No, let me hear from the rest of my colleagues first.
So, my, my general objection to this whole discussion is this haphazard, not rooted in any, I mean, I appreciate the willingness of Councilmember Najarian to seemingly compromise from nine to eight, but I don't understand how that's rooted in any type of quantifiable, understandable reasoning when, you know, we had the whole purpose, we created the ad hoc committee, and I'm going to go back to my position that I mentioned last week, that we had this ad hoc committee made up of tenants and landlords and quote-unquote "unaffiliated" person on there, appointed by this council to look at what had worked and what hadn't worked in the past with the policies in place. We could have given that body, which was working just fine, very successfully, the added task of exploring these issues, and instead, we're having this kind of swap meet discussion up here as to whether this is going to work or that's going to work. I mean, there are things that I principally support, right? Folks have mentioned how tenants don't have the means to hire legal representation necessarily. So, you know, if there's a way that the city could explore a way to possibly assist in that or create a fund that gives some legal help or puts teeth into the rules and laws we have in place, those are things I could get behind, but I don't want to get behind it with us haphazardly having these discussions. We can have a group of people who are, who understand these issues far better than us, look at it, have discussions, bring it back for recommendations. I mean, right to return to a unit after a renovation seems to make sense. Give that person the right to at least return to their unit. But, you know, how much of a problem is this? How grand is it? Give that person the right to at least return to their unit. But, you know, how much of a problem is this? How grand is it? We're making comparisons to cities that I don't even see the necessary nexuses to. I, my hope would be that we can have a agreement here on this council tonight, to have these all sent to this ad hoc committee, restore the one individual from that committee, that position who had passed away, have a robust discussion where the community can be involved, where the people who are actually impacted by this can have that discussion and then make their recommendations to this council where we can look at the public with a straight face and say, this has been vetted, this is what we think we should adopt. Thank you.
Yeah, I would, I would like to respond to that briefly. I mean, I, I kind of think we did that, but I know that there are differences of opinion. I mean, we went back and forth on this stuff with them multiple times. However, I have no problem going back and having them do work. My problem is that in the meantime, we've got a situation where evictions are taking place. And that's why what South Pasadena did and what I originally wanted to do was put in a temporary moratorium on rent evictions while we take the time to study the problem, please. While we take the time, whether it's three months or six months, and then we do the research and then we do something that's extremely thoughtful. But in the meantime, we've set out some protections. I would, that's still what I would like to do. But barring that, I want to do something. I mean, we can come back and fix it, but I want to do something now, one way or the other. That's, that's my position.
So if I may, you know, I am in agreement that I would like to see this go back and I think it's something that needs to come to council in its entirety, given our comments. Not just from the audience here, but having been vetted through the landlords and the tenants together. I would say that while they're going through that process, because it seems like we're, we're looking at also like reverting back to some of the original language that we have. One of the biggest issues is us not being able to provide assistance beyond what our housing office does when it comes to legal. How long is that going to take for us to get that back in order for us to create a program for, for a legal council? Because, you know, I will say that this may sound like, you know, the folks that are here, I don't know how many calls you're getting a week of people being evicted and needing assistance. And I would like to see that data and I would like to know what that number looks like.
Councilmember Assatyan, since our November 28 meeting, we've had 20 calls specifically related to rent evictions based on renovation. So 20 calls since November 28.
So 20 people.
So, but here's the thing, that's not an accurate representation. If it's 20 calls from five different addresses, that's a lot different than 20 calls from one address.
I don't have that exact number, but we suspect that it's 20 unique calls.
And there are many, many people who don't call.
Right. To Lucy's point, there was a lot of speakers tonight that have not contacted us, so.
So I want, I do want us to do this right. I do want the ad hoc committee to be put back together and for them to review all of it. I would particularly like for us to figure out how we're providing assistance and legal assistance specifically to people that need help. But again, I, I think a lot of this discussion was initially a knee-jerk reaction to one case that came to us and you know, I want to be able to address this in, in a way that, that works for everyone.
Okay. Councilmember Devine?
Well, I, I agree with you about the exemptions for units or below. I think after reading the report from staff, I kind of changed my mind. And then one of the gals that stood up tonight said that small landlords defined by the state is one to four units. So that really kind of solidified my decision. As far as going back to the ad hoc committee, would that, do you have any comments on that action? I mean, again, it's delay, delay. We do want to get it right. We do want to get it. We want to do the best we can for the tenants that are, that are having problems, but is there, is there any real positive that you can help us with make this decision?
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I would say that if the desire is to go back to the ad hoc committee, we would have to first contact all of the committee members to see if they're still interested in serving. And as mentioned earlier, we have one committee member that would have to be replaced. So the question would be whether or not we replace that, or the council replace that committee member from the pool of existing applicants that applied over a year ago and whether or not they're still interested or would there be a new recruitment for that position? And then any other committee members that say that they would not serve, we'd have to try and find replacements for them. Either from that dated pool of applicants or a brand-new recruitment. That, that's how I vision, envisioned this moving forward, if that's the direction of the council.
And I would recommend a finite number of meetings or period of time to return with a set of recommendations if that council's desire.
So that wouldn't be a committee that'd be able to meet next month, in my opinion, with all that has to be done.
In fact, the committee is disbanded, so you would have to reinstitute it and then we'd have to go through the process again, decide to pick up the ones that served on it. And the only thing I'll add to it is certainly the council's policy decision whether to do that and send it back. Our view is, the staff's view, is that the committee served a valuable purpose and made a lot of good recommendations. There was a lot of consensus in here. Just want to temper the expectations, though, that if you do send it back and it comes back, that there will be a moment where there's agreement across the board between the landlord and tenant groups. That, that will not occur. I mean, I've been involved in this ordinance since we first started drafting it back in 2019. We've had meetings go, multiple meetings go till 3:00 AM, 1:00 AM. There will be disagreements. And so just want to know that when it comes back, there will still be disagreements. You'll have, you might have some more input, but I don't think you'll have, you, you know, you will ultimately have to make that decision and there will be multiple viewpoints expressed to you if and when we come back to you, if that's your decision.
In other words, we'd be back to square one.
I wouldn't call square one. I just, having gone through this a couple of times now, I know there will be differing points of view on this.
So I'm not in favor of, you know, reforming an ad hoc committee, but I would like to see the exemption lowered. And I think it's a good ordinance. I, I hope that the tenants feel that they are protected and that, you know, that this is a fair, fair ordinance. That's all I have to say.
So you would, so what exactly would you want to support in terms of exemptions?
Number of units.
Number of units.
Four, four or below, four or below, not including, but not to exempt single families and duplexes or condos.
Not to exempt, no, to exempt.
Exempt, yeah.
Single family and duplexes.
And four and less, four or less.
So up to four would be exempted? But how about right now, we do provide coverage for up to four, to three and four when it comes to the relocation assistance? So would we?
No, you'd keep that.
So we would bifurcate it?
Yes, that's good.
Four, can you explain that?
Yeah, can you explain?
So there's the rent, there's a 7% or more occasion, and then there's a renovation occasion. You're saying, what, with regard to four?
For both?
For both.
For the greater than 7% exempt and the renovation less than four?
Seven is a cap, so no less than seven, 7%.
Okay, so we've got a 7% cap.
Cap, right.
What you're saying is up to four units, that 7% cap that, that triggers relocation is not applicable.
Well, right.
And you're saying for renovations that are, what did we say, 45 days?
Forty-five days.
You're not changing your mind on that, are you? Okay. Forty-five days and all the other requirements, up to four units are exempt for relocation.
Right. I'm good with that.
That's what you're saying.
I'm good with that.
Just, just to be clear, though, the first part of that, the 7%, right now, if you're in a building with three units or four units, you are protected.
You're protected. Well, I want to keep.
I wouldn't want to dial that back.
No, I want to keep the protections. Let's keep the protections because I'm, this, this is not my bailiwick.
Okay, so for rent, you're saying keep it as is, single and duplex.
And the 7%.
For renovation, are you going to four for renovation?
7%, we keep the.
Single and duplex. Anything above that is relocation triggered. So three or more is relocation triggered. How about the renovation?
Exempt.
What number? Four and below. Okay, I see what you're saying.
But I don't know that we have three votes, because I could, I could accept that as just an ability to do something now. I still am, I'm okay with.
I'm not okay with us.
I could accept that at this point.
You could?
Or not. We're going to be looking at this again, obviously, but.
We're literally rewriting an ordinance on the spot.
No, we're just tweaking some.
This is government action.
Yeah, so if you could support that, so that would mean, just for me to be sure, to be clear, everything in the ordinance as is, except the change that we're going to make is that. We're going to bifurcate the, what do we call that 7% thing? Is there a simple way to describe?
It's called rent-based termination.
Rent-based termination, okay. For rent-based terminations, it's, the only exemption is for duplexes and single family. Okay? For
renovation basis.
Renovation evictions, the exemption would be four units and below. You're okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that?
I think we need to put something in.
I want to get something down and it doesn't preclude us coming back.
Doesn't preclude us coming back.
And it doesn't preclude us reforming the landlord-tenant commission and looking more closely at this and coming back and, and making more changes.
If we do this, can we also agree at the same time that we're going to also send this back to the ad hoc committee?
We'll have to create it?
We have to recreate it.
Task them?
No. I'm against that.
Well, I, I'm okay with that, but I just don't want that holding up.
This is more input on different, we're, we're taking this action here that you just described, but all those other issues, maybe plus whatever else we want to throw in, maybe we want more information on what's a small landlord. Maybe that's what we give to.
I'm, I'm very much interested in that information, so I, you know, if we can agree that we're going to also send this back to the ad hoc committee, they're going to look at it and they're going to come back and this is something that we're just passing for now, then I will join you. I, I do one thing, the one thing that didn't come out of the ad hoc committee that was recommended by staff and I raised issue with earlier today was the the multiplier for families with minor children. That's not something that needed attendance or the landlords came with. And it wasn't something that was out of the ad hoc committee.
The qualified tenant?
Yeah. That was something that was recommended by staff that we discussed. And again, when the information was provided from staff to me, the argument was that they need more time. And so now I don't know why they're in the qualified tenants.
Mayor Brofman, Councilmember Assatyan, that was discussed by the committee, qualified tenant was one of the discussions. I believe we even went back to them. Let's see if they have the vote. Give me a second.
That's not what committee members said.
How many committee members are actually?
Well, I don't want, this is not going to be a discussion from the audience, please, please, please.
I don't have the numbers, but we did discuss qualified tenant. Again, maybe one member didn't agree with it, but we did give it a vote. We did have a discussion on it and the committee did discuss it.
Well, I mean.
If I can comment on the very last meeting of the committee, the communication between the committee members broke down. That committee, we don't believe, can come back and work viably together in the, in the formation that we had before. Up until that meeting, there was a lot of consensus on various ideas. At that very last meeting, then that would have been the September meeting, we were asked for some very specific recommendations. We were asked, we want to know exactly what the relocation value should be and we wanted a vote from the committee members to give us that number. There were about three or four different things that council at the August meeting directed staff to go back, meet with the committee and get very specific recommendations. And so during that meeting, the communication broke down because we were in, and we no longer had unanimous vote. We no longer had consensus. What we had was a majority vote. And so, and so it's true that the committee discussed it. What isn't true is that there was unanimity in the conclusion, but we weren't asking for unanimity. We were asking for a recommendation from the committee to bring to you.
But Ms. Varbetian, that committee also was short one member who had passed away and no one from staff came to us and said, you know what, there's one person who passed away. Perhaps this council should have appointed an alternate or one of the people that we didn't have necessarily enough votes to appoint, but had come just short and have them pinch-hit for that person. Perhaps that would have changed the dynamics of the meeting.
At the, the, the point in time where the landlord representative passed away, the entirety of the ordinance had been reviewed. And at that very last meeting, we were actually missing tenant representatives as well because they were not interested in staying on with the committee. This is why we don't believe that we can take this matter back to that same committee. We can't step into that river again a second time.
All these cities have landlord-tenant committees. I think that's pretty insulting to our tenants and our landlords, Ms. Varbetian.
One of the recommendations.
Hold on. She, she wasn't saying that landlords and tenants can't get along. She was saying it's very difficult for the group that was sitting on this ad hoc committee to come to agreement or to have any sort of civilized discussion. So with, with all respect, with all respect. I'm sorry, I'm just, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. Mr. Mr. Harpetian's at order. I'm just trying to explain, as I've understood it from talking to my staff and.
Mr. Harpetian, you're going to have to leave if you're shouting from the, from the audience. We don't, this is just not proper decorum. Please.
Mr. Mayor.
I would like you to leave if you're going to talk from the, from the audience. That's what we would prefer. Thank you. Yes.
So since this item's going to come back as an ad hoc committee that we would need to look at anyway, can we look at new folks or whatnot to, to appoint?
We'll have to reconstitute.
Yeah, I'm open to all that. I'm open to reconstituting a new committee and relooking at this stuff. We can always make changes, but today I think there are three votes, at least, to move on something and I would, I would like to entertain a motion on that and get something done.
Would you be open to changing the, the family with minor children to children with disabilities?
Well, I would be.
I think that's more fair. I mean, if we're looking at additional costs.
Family with minor children.
We currently have as a qualifier for the multiplier, it's families with minor children. I'm saying.
No, we don't have families, families with children that are enrolled in the school district.
In our schools, right. I'm asking if we can change that to, to children with disabilities.
But we already have disabilities in the.
You have it as the.
Yes.
Does that apply to the child?
Any member in the household that has disability.
Okay.
Any member. Okay, so.
Mr. Mayor, sorry, I just want to repeat what Mr. Zovak and Mr. Garcia said and temper the expectation. Recreating the ad hoc committee, I'm not saying it can't be done, but it's going to take some time.
We, we keep saying recreate. I would like to put forth the proposal to establish a permanent landlord-tenant committee that can discuss these issues, that will be, have the makeup that we had initially intended. And, you know, you can limit their meetings to four times a year. It doesn't have to be a monthly meeting. But at least we'll have a group of people who live in the city, who pay rent, property owners who live in the city or own property in the city. I, it, it just seems like a more efficient way of coming up with solutions to these problems than what we've just seen transpire over the last few.
Let me suggest the following. If this is Councilmember Kusakian's desire, we could put it on the new business agenda.
That's a new item.
And we will go back and we will reconsider our options. And I know he's said this from the very beginning, he wants a permanent landlord-tenant committee. I'm not opposed to that, so let's talk about that as a separate item. I, I don't want to kind of railroad us, but I would like to get a decision and move on to the next item. We have a lot of people here to talk about locker center and the trees and so. Do you have, if you have further pressing questions or comments, I don't want to cut you off. But if not, I would entertain a motion.
Before the motion is made, we do need to like. Before the motion's made, we do need to, like, on the record, get what the changes are to the various sections. So maybe I can have Ms. Varpetian read them, and then the motion can be made on that. If that's okay. Are you able to do that, Lucy?
So in the definition section, under 9.30.020, where it currently says the rental unit shall not include the following. It used to say the rental units located on a parcel containing two or fewer dwelling units. We will bring that back, which would then mean the entirety of the ordinance would be subject to, to, to anything that's more than three units. Three or more. Except that in the past, there was a section under 9.30.025, requirement of offering a one-year lease. At the time, the ordinance had said that if you're in a triplex or a fourplex, you don't have to offer the one-year leases. So that too will remain. There will be no change there. Lastly, in the section that deals with evictions, where we have the.
What section is that, Lucy?
This is under 9.30.030 evictions. Section G. The landlord seeks in good faith to recover possession. There will be a carve-out that will limit the, the relocation value to anything that's five or more units.
Would that be in that section or would be in the calculation of relocation?
Four and below is exempt from the renovation.
Probably in the calculation of the relocation section.
And, and all the rules around.
That would apply to section G.
All the rules around the rent eviction, such as the 45-day work period, the eight times monthly rental or fair market value, right? All those would, would apply to any building, any unit in a building of five or more. Correct?
Yes, so we would actually include that. The, the exemption would be under 9.30.035 required payment of relocation fee. That's where we will do the exemption.
So I think if I could, the language would read in subsection A. So it says if the termination of tenancies based on the grounds set forth in subsections G, H, I, or J, we would include a paracetical in subsection G, which is the renovation-based evictions to say excluding units, four units or less. So that would, that would exempt those that are four units or less from having to pay that extended or increased relocation. So those are the changes. So if that, somebody wants to make a motion on that, we can.
I'll move that.
Before, I'm so sorry, before you move that, the, the fines. How many notices do they get before they're fined, or is it just automatic?
They, administrative citations, how many notices would they get typically?
So one, two, and three. So the first one.
They don't get a warning?
They typically, most administrative citations, and I don't see why this would be any different, would get, they would get at least one warning before being cited on the administrative citation piece of it.
Okay. I mean, is that how it's written in this ordinance, or is it?
Addresses is the value, so it would fall under the broader administrative citation process. And this ordinance did not associate a value to the violation, so that it, it now does.
So the direction that I would want with this motion is that there be a warning that's given before the fine and that the education portion is done to landlords and that we're not doing a gotcha moment with them.
Okay, sure.
Okay. All right.
So moved. With the changes.
Okay, so move by Councilmember Divine, seconded by Councilmember Najarian. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asadrian?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
No.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Botman?
Yes.
We just, that, so that was for the ordinance, changing the code, and the administrative citations ordinance is the next one. It's actually where your, your requested changes would be incorporated, so if we can get a motion on that as well.
Move it.
Okay, so that's for the administrative citation.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
The change.
Councilmembers Asadrian?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
No.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Botman?
Yes. Okay, thank you, everyone, for your patience. These are not easy subjects for any of us. Okay. What is our next item?
Next are action items. Action item A. Public works regarding adoption plans and specification for the Locustana Avenue Rehabilitation Project. One resolution adopting the plans and specifications for the Locustana Avenue Rehabilitation Project. Specification number 3A29 and directing the city clerk to advertise for bids.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm waiting for, for the audience to.
Okay. Please have your conversations outside, and if you're, if you're not staying for the next item, this is the time to go. Not that I don't want you to stay, you're all welcome to stay as long as you want, but. Oh, I, I have it already. Oh.
Mayor Botman, members of City Council, as it was read into the record, this is a request to adopt plans and specs for the Locustana Avenue Rehabilitation Project and the authorization to go out to bid on this project. Typically, these items are listed and placed on the consent items. However, because there are designs for creative crosswalks that previously council has shown an interest in looking at, reviewing, and approving, we put it under action items for, for your consideration and, and approval. It's important to note that the majority of the City Council has previously directed staff to move forward with the design of this project. That includes a protective, protected bike lane. Staff presented reports at 60% design as well as 90% design just to, because of the sensitivity of reducing one lane of traffic to council, and we received direction at both of, during this, both of these presentation, as well as based on individual briefings with council members, where staff received direction on extensive community outreach with business associations, homeowners associations, et cetera. All that said, I'm going to turn this over to Rostam Tavitian, civil engineer in our public works department. This is his first presentation at City Council, and I ask that you be gentle with him, and we'll just open it up for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian. Good evening, Mayor Botman and members of City Council. We are pleased to announce that the public works department has completed the design plans for the Locustana Avenue Rehabilitation Project. This project initially started as a street resurfacing project and eventually evolved into a multimodal project to incorporate different design elements that was requested by the various stakeholders throughout the life of the project. And this major capital improvement project will incorporate various scopes of work that will be outlined in detail during this presentation. The project location is situated on Locustana Avenue between North Verdugo Road and Montrose Avenue. Fremont Elementary School is adjacent to the project site on Paloma Avenue. As you can see, we have completed an extensive community outreach campaign, including multiple virtual and in-person project overview meetings, multiple email campaigns and social media informational updates, as well as meeting with different homeowners associations and stakeholders. Furthermore, we presented this project to the Transportation and Parking Commission meeting, and we also brought this, the design options in this project to council in October of 2022 for further action. We concluded our community outreach campaign by conducting an in-person community meeting in March of last year. And that led us, that was at the 90% design phase, and now we are at 100% design phase completion. One of the goals of this project is to incorporate multimodal improvements by installing two different types of bicycle facilities along the corridor, both of which will include the installation of a center two-way left-turn lane and reducing the driving lanes to one lane in each direction after the road repurposing. The Class IV protected bike lanes will be installed between North Verdugo Road and Glenwood Avenue, which will have a protective barrier and it will be curb-running. The Class II buffered bike lanes will be installed between Glenwood Avenue and Montrose Avenue, and these will have a buffer and they will be green-colored bike lanes. In addition, major sewer and stormwater treatment improvements are planned to upgrade the, the existing undersized sewer main line, as well as the installation of new bioretention facilities and new drywall systems to capture and treat stormwater runoff. As part of the pedestrian master plan, pedestrian safety improvements will be implemented at Piedmont Avenue by the way of realigning the intersection to shorten the pedestrian crossing distance, as well as the installation of a pedestrian hawk, pedestrian hybrid beacon, also known as a HOCC system, at Piedmont. This project will also incorporate the removal of the northbound right-turn lane at Honolulu Avenue. Sorry about that. Furthermore, in order to improve active modes of transportation and connectivity, mid-block signalized bicycle crossing will be installed between Las Palmas Avenue and Arlington Avenue. This will allow the cyclists access to Fremont Elementary School traveling southbound from Locustana Avenue, since that's a midpoint of the intersection. And due to the recent positive feedback and demand for more creative crosswalk installations and in a joint effort with the Department of Library Arts and, Library Arts and Culture spearheading this effort, this project will incorporate the installation of creative crosswalks at four signalized locations by two different artists. The first location will be at Piedmont Avenue, as you can see on the screen. The second location will be at the, at Shirley Jean Street, which is adjacent to the local nursery in the area. The third location will be at Oakmont View Drive. And finally, the fourth location will be at Roseland Avenue. As indicated before, this project started as a street resurfacing project, and the street improvements will include repaving the road to extend the service life of the pavement, as well as the realignment of intersections to shorten pedestrian crossing distance and removal of slip lanes. This will also include bicycle-friendly surface grade replacements to enhance bicycle ridership quality and traffic signal improvements, tree installations, and the installation of reflective pavement is also planned as part of this project. The intersections of Las Palmas, Sierra, Las Palmas, Paloma, Sierra Vista, Arlington, and Angeles Avenue will be realigned to remove the existing slip lanes, allow a safer experience for pedestrians by reducing the crossing distance, as well as better align the intersection and to get rid of the conflict points that are currently there. In addition to the removal of slip lanes, this project will incorporate the realignment of the intersection at Sycamore Avenue. This will discourage cut-through traffic into the residential neighborhoods and also shorten pedestrian crossing distance. This is also another measure that we are implementing to better align those diagonal intersections throughout the corridor. Furthermore, traffic signal modifications are required to upgrade the existing old traffic signals at various locations. And due to the request from the community to improve pedestrian connectivity from the Oakmont neighborhood onto Locustana Avenue, a new traffic signal will be installed at Oakmont View Drive, and that will allow pedestrians to safely cross Locustana Avenue. And that will also allow for vehicles to maneuver safely through the intersection. Other aspects of this project will include 20 new trees being planted throughout the corridor per the city's armin first, foresters' recommendations. And to conclude, the major improvements associated with this project will be incorporating the installation of reflective cool pavement to mitigate the urban heat island effect on Paloma Avenue between Los, Locustana Avenue and Downing Avenue. And this will be adjacent to Fremont Elementary School. This is also important to note that this will be the first installation of the reflective pavement on a city of Glendale Street, and it's also a continuation of our cool pavement pilot program that we have been implementing the past two years. The anticipated construction start date will be in May of this year, and we aim to complete the project by the end of the year, assuming that we receive responsible bids that are within our budget. And with that, that concludes the presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay. I have something on the order of 13 cards. Do we have anybody on the phone?
Mayor, we have 13 cards and three callers on the line.
And three callers, okay. So we'll set the same rule, five minutes after we begin the cards, we will cut, cut it off for anybody that walks in the door or that calls. Okay? So if anybody wants to speak, that's listening from home, please call within the next five minutes. Let me, before I go to the speakers, are there any pressing questions that any of my colleagues wanna ask staff? Okay, then we'll go straight to the speakers.
Mr. Mayor, how many minutes per speaker, considering of 16?
Let's do two.
10.
Let's do two minutes, okay? If you were planning for three, just try to squeeze it, and I won't be too brutal about cutting people off. Okay. Willard Gleason. Okay, well, we're down one. I imagine some people couldn't stay. Patrick Murphy.
Being an Irishman, two minutes is really quick. I wanna thank Pastor Katsanova and Rostam Tavitian, right? In their outreach. They worked hard. They came to our neighborhoods. However, what was interesting is that at the 90% plan, they sent out 23,000 mailers, and that was after council's action in October of '22. 23,000 mailers for the March 23 meeting after council's action. Many people were unaware until the 23,000 were sent. We need consistency in public outreach. We don't have it. Community Development Department does one thing, Public Works does something else. There's no consistency, and I know many of you, some of you, I should say, have requested public outreach more consistently. The cost of the project is estimated to be somewhere between $17 and $19 million, according to the report that I read. That's, that's a lot of money. There was no efforts at traffic calming on this project early on. No, no, no calming measures were put in place. Concerned about the maintenance of the curbed area. What's gonna happen there? Can't take a street sweeper in there. I don't know if there, I didn't see anything on maintenance in the report. There was cost consideration that there's not enough money for this project right now, and you're gonna have to take it from somewhere else. I know of $6 million where you can take a good section of that and use it for this. I guess I'm out of time. You're shutting down at two minutes. Thank you.
Did it ding? I didn't hear it.
It's six seconds.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you. Daniel Warner. Daniel Warner? Julie Kobe.
Good evening. Thank you for your time tonight. My name is Julie, and I'm a resident of Sycamore Woods Neighborhood. I am thrilled about these improvements to Lockers Center Avenue. The current road is in desperate need of safety improvements for all types of users, drivers and otherwise. I look forward to the decrease in car speeding, improved sidewalks for pedestrians, and the must-needed first-ever protected bike lane in Glendale. I currently ride my bike with my 19-year-old son. He demands it every evening with his little Moore sign. It's really cute. And I'm so excited at the possibility of safely biking or even walking him to elementary school in just a few short years. This is something I would never consider with the current layout and dangerous usage of the road as is. If possible at this stage, I do ask, just if we could, that the pedestrian experience near Sycamore do be just considered. I have had, nice to meet you, conversations with Public Works that a crosswalk there is not possible right now, and I understand that, but given the number of people who do seek out this more residential route, walking and biking to places like downtown Montrose or Spar Heights or Montrose Park, this is an area that does warrant some attention when thinking about like safety and comfort of sidewalks. Currently, the sidewalks are very narrow, there are poles, it's just kind of difficult to get around, and I think that's why people are choosing to run across a current four-lane road versus going up to Honolulu and taking that crosswalk instead. So if there's any way we can kind of consider that experience, if that's the preferred route, I'd really appreciate that as a walker and biker of that area. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and council members, for the prioritizing safety for everyone with this project, and I hope to see it completed soon so we can start using it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Edward Gonzalez.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, thanks for the time this evening. My name is Edward Gonzalez. My wife, 13-month-old son, and I are one block west of Locker Center Avenue, and we all appreciate the effort to prioritize pedestrian and cyclist safety, and also driver safety as a frequent driver through the area. And I would like to encourage this City Council and any future City Council to continue to consider these types of safety improvements for all road users. I know that my wife in particular, she does ride her bike occasionally, but generally does not ride it in that area, south of Honolulu, or anywhere between Montrose and Honolulu, because it feels dangerous. And we, if we had that opportunity, we would certainly use it more often to be able to get to all the amenities that Glendale has to offer in Spar Heights and in Honolulu Street, so our avenue. So we want to encourage these types of projects. We want to make sure that these types of projects are taken care of on a timely schedule, because I'd like my son to be able to ride to school in time for elementary school and not in time for high school. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Don La Bresch.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. First off, I'd like to ask, I have three minutes. I sat through a lot of rent control. Some of the people spoke for five minutes. We have a speaker that didn't show up here tonight. Could I get the three minutes?
I can't do that. It's two minutes. So just, let's start your clock now, and then you'll get your full two minutes.
Yeah, I'm going to go squeeze because I can. I'm a resident of Locker Center, 70 years. My family's been here, right near Locker Center. Many of us affected up here by this lane removal do not want this done. Our tax money paid for these lanes. Now our taxes, including extra gas tax money, is going to remove them. We rely on these roads for travel. A bus or bicycle will not substitute for cars. We need the roads, especially with an increasing population in the suburbs. The city's own road diet of 2020 noted future congestion, recommending a shared road. I'm not against slowing traffic, and I ride a bicycle. I've been in touch with the Traffic Department. Thank you for being forthcoming, Rustam, with information, but no other options were considered. We can now legally lower the speed limit. That was not looked at. Glendale PD did enforcement from Locker Center all the way down Kenyatta to GCC in one period a few years ago. They wrote 1,000 tickets that slowed traffic. When these roads are empty, you're still going to get people doing 50-plus miles an hour. I know you think you did proper outreach. I've talked to many people here of the 22,000 stakeholders. I'll bet at least 15,000 are unaware of the lane removal, including 75% of my neighbors. And the direct mailing that was mailed did not mention that this road would be removed. I don't know if you're aware of that. A lot of people, they said they did not get that. So what I'm asking, I have a petition here signed by, you know, American Legion Director, Montrose Shopping Park Member, CB Town Council. I'm asking you to do a mailing to let all of those disenfranchised 22,000 citizens know they are getting a lane removed. They're not going to know this till the streets are ripped up, and I don't think it's proper that we got the mailing after the vote and it didn't say that. I've been trying to spread the word, but I'm just one person. I think the shit city, the city should do that, do their due diligence. Most people won't know about this. Does anyone want to accept the petition?
Yes, you can please give it to the city clerk.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, and I appreciate you going quickly and getting through it in two minutes. Kara Sergeal. Sergeal. No Kara left. Martha Sensel.
Good evening, and thank you for the time to comment. I was delighted in October 2022 when you all passed the motion to do this lane reconfiguration and improvements along the entire corridor. I think it's great that it shows leadership from you all to make Glendale a much more friendly place for living, for cycling, for walking, for everything. This corridor, as we know, has an elementary school with families. I think the improvements actually really will benefit the entire community, including the local community, some of whom have been vocal against the project. I think that they don't realize what having a more walkable environment will be like. I don't think the traffic, I think you've, the traffic issues have really been addressed. I think staff has done a great job. They've offered mitigation for some of the concerns about cut-through traffic, so I thank you all for that. And I really do look forward to you approving this and moving forward with the, getting the bids and implementing the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew Taylor.
Hello again. I wanted to offer my unequivocal support for this project. I wanted to address one of the other comments that was brought up about how enforcement and, you know, lowering the speed limit could have possibly been solutions. And I'd like, I'd like to argue that lane removals and narrowing lanes are what slow down cars. A sign, you know, a sign isn't going to do anything. Enforcement stops, you know, as soon as the police officers go away. You change the layout of the road, that's how you get people to slow down and be safer. I am, I would have preferred that all the bike lanes along the road could have been Class Four protected. I understand that would have required, you know, parking and removal. But if we're trying to, if we're trying to decrease traffic by encouraging the type of traffic we want to see through walking and, you know, biking, more protected facilities are the way to do that. And the art crosswalks and just the crosswalks in general in that area by, particularly by the school, I was wondering if any provision had been made for making any of those raised crosswalks, particularly by the school, to really make cars slow down where people will be crossing. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Hoiblend.
Good evening, Mayor Brotman and City Council. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak in favor of the pedestrian and cycling improvements on Locker Center Avenue. This arterial is one of the only ways to get through Locker Center by bicycle. Today, the street is very car-centric and difficult for even the most experienced bicycle rider. This project will transform the street, turning a street we ride as a last resort into our first choice to get through this part of Glendale. The project will make this street accessible to people of every age and skill level. As a 27-year Glendale resident, I often take this route and will welcome the improved safety along this route. Please vote for the approval of this project so that the neighborhoods along the street and all the people who choose active transportation through this route can enjoy their trips safely.
Thank you. Cole Bazemore.
Good evening, Council. I'm here as a representative of Walk By Glendale. I'm here to encourage you to please adopt or support this project as presented. There's a lot to like about it, the safety improvements in particular, I think are going to be enormous for people that are in this area, the students at Fremont Elementary. It's going to help slow down traffic, as we've already heard, and that's going to benefit all users, bicyclists, pedestrians, and drivers. I myself go up there quite often, biking up into Montrose, often hitting up the Locker Center Nursery that's right there. So for me, you know, this is really exciting that this whole corridor is going to be improved in this way. Would say that this might be a wonderful template to see implemented in other parts of the city as well. Where, you know, those of us that bike are really encouraged to see a protected lane like this. As was mentioned, this is going to be one of the first ones in Glendale, so let's see if we can get some more like this. What else? The beautification as well, I think, is a huge win, as well as the bioswells. You know, those are things that we don't see a lot of in Glendale, but, you know, let's get more. And the connections that I think this may have to a potential Verdugo, yeah, Verdugo-Wash, you know, multi-use pathway could be great, because, you know, you'll have these protected crosswalks and different safety elements. So anyways, thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Alec Bartrosiv.
Hello, Alec Bartrosiv from Walk By Glendale. I want to welcome interim Public Works Director, Mr. Hernandez. You're inheriting an excellent project that I think staff did a very good job working on. Rustam, you did a very good job. Welcome. I want to thank Public Works staff. I think they've been very responsive in addressing community stakeholder concerns. Whether you're a critic of the project or not, we all universally agree that speeding is a problem on Locker Center Avenue. Speed limit or not, the current speed limit on the street is 40 miles an hour, and people are clocking in at 48, 49 miles an hour. So let that be a sign, pun intended, to you that signage and encouragement and education campaigns do not work. We need Public Works engineering interventions that make our streets safer. And so we are here to advocate for safer streets. This is not just about bicyclists. This is not just about pedestrians. We need to slow the street down to make it safer for everybody, including the residents that live on that street and the local elementary school where young kids are going every day. So please support this project. We'd like to see more of it. Every project is context-sensitive. This one happens to be where a lane reconfiguration is appropriate and will not cause delay in the community. And it also happens to be a very good project that'll make it astronomically safer for everybody. My only thing I'd like to say is that we should not take four years from start to finish to see projects like this in the city. We are working towards a new bike plan that is looking at a 20-year horizon. We cannot spend four years for every single project that is just one mile long. So please work a little bit faster to make our streets safer. Our lives depend on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Joaquin Cicas. For those of you who don't know, Joaquin is the Executive Director of the Arroyo Verdugo Community's Joint Powers Authority. And a Glendale resident.
Honorable Mayor and members of City Council, Joaquin Cicas. I'm a resident of Glendale. I live on Arquita's Avenue, two houses away from Locker Center Avenue, so right along this corridor. And as someone who not only drives the street every day, but also walks on the sidewalk, the very narrow sidewalk, I'm very excited to see that this project is ready to move forward, should council approve that today. I'd like to thank staff for all the work that has been done on this project, a significant amount of outreach. I know it was just one slide today, but in the prior meetings, you've seen the hundreds of people that have been contacted, provided comments, and the thousands that received mailers. And city staff really worked closely with the different neighborhood groups, as well as the larger community, to put together a design that addresses, safety is a critical need along this corridor. The two-way left turn lane along the corridor is an important component to this project, and it's part of the design that really helps the motorist safety, which I think is a piece that sometimes gets overlooked. It's not just about the bikes and the pads, but really, this is enhancing safety for all road users. And lastly, as, in addition to being a resident along the corridor, I'm also a registered traffic engineer, and I've taken a look at the project from the standpoint of volumes, from the standpoint of design, and it's really laid out very well. The staff has taken a look at the sustainability elements. They've taken a look at speed reduction treatments and really done a great job in putting together a project on a street that has low volumes but high speeds. The south end of this roadway already becomes one lane when it reaches Verdugo, so a single lane is something that is, that manages the amount of traffic that is seen on this street. With that, I just would like to request City Council approve the staff recommendation and move forward with the advertisement of this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And, oh, I think Peter Hebert, you wanted to speak too, and I know I saw a card with your name, and now I don't know where it is, but I do remember that you put in a card.
So I'll just the council later, but first to the city staff. Kudos. The plans look much better than I anticipated. They look great. I think you did a tremendous job incorporating input from everybody, including the cut-through traffic, changing the intersection at Sycamore would be helpful. The crosswalks, especially at Fremont, that's a great safety improvement, and all of the less-than-90-degree turn angles going onto the north-southbound streets of Locker Center. Fantastic. Even the Engelmann oak. Thank you. Endangered oak species here, incorporating that where we can in its navel habitat is fantastic. So I heartily encourage the council to vote to approve this project. I live on Rose Lawn. Almost didn't make it here tonight because the stoplight at the bottom of Rose Lawn, a car ran that stoplight at a high rate of speed and almost took me out on the way in here. So this is absolutely a needed safety improvement, especially at Fremont. My kids walked to school for seven years there, so I want to second the recommendation of maybe a rate of crosswalk at Fremont, in particular to enforce slowing, because we know that downhill speeds just get out of control, whether you intend to or not. But I think this is a fantastic project, incorporating a wide range of improvements, and again, heartily encourage you to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have a few callers?
We have four callers.
Four callers, okay.
Our first caller is Armin Hovanisian. Armin, you're on air. You have two minutes. Armin Hovanisian?
I think I'm for the next item for the resolution on Arta.
Oh, okay. It says 8A. Our next caller is David Traalongo. David, you're on air. You have two minutes.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
In council, mayor. I am a little disappointed in the outreach. I believe that outreach still needs to be extended. I believe that not enough people are aware of this and still aren't aware of it, even though we're this deep into the process. I believe more people need to get involved, more of the public needs to get involved in this, so that you really have a very clear consensus. in this, so that you really have a very clear consensus on what the general population feels like of those that live in the area. I know there's always many speakers that come to council covering a variety of different subjects. I always wonder where those people live and whether or not they live in the areas that are currently under discussion, just as the issue is with the Verdugo Wash and the discussions of the bike lane potentially being put into the wash, which is another great concern. And then too is also the expense involved in working on Locust Center, doing the bike lane and the wash, and then, of course, the maintenance, of which having a dedicated lane for bikes that is protected, who is, how are you going to maintain that? How is that going to be cleaned? And how much extra will that cost to have somebody specifically spend the time just to clean that area? I ride my bike a lot, too, and I know what it's like to ride in a protected lane with all kinds of debris and garbage that tends to collect in those areas, especially hazardous items like broken glass and all kinds of other things that are hazardous.
Thank you, David. You're out of time. Thank you for your comment.
Bike rider. Thanks.
Our next caller is Dave Gallagher. Dave, you're on air. You have two minutes.
Hello. Thank you very much, everybody. Honorable Mayor and City Council, good evening, everyone. Thank you for the progress that you've been moving forward with the rehabilitation project. It really is comprehensive. You've responded to much of our comments, and it's just been fantastic. So for the record, my family, my friends, and neighbors immediately located near Locust Center Avenue as it passes through Spar Heights, we are in support of the safety that this is promoting cars, pedestrians, and bicycles to be able to pass through this area and be unscathed. So I'm really so happy with what we've been moving forward with. If you can, please, with any of the bike lane that is not introducing verticals, such as a plastic bollard that could break away if a car hits that rather than a person, I'm hoping maybe we can add that. Somebody mentioned earlier about addition of raised crosswalk. That seems appropriate next to the school, for sure. Remember, we just heard a moment ago that 48 miles an hour is an average speed. Any efforts we can to reduce that where we're right next to a school would be really the direction to head. It's been said before, kudos to the staff. Again, fantastic the fact that you brought in so many components, the bio-retention installation that you have on the plans that are for Sierra Vista and the one at Las Palmas, that's within 50 feet of the Fremont School. So that's a teachable moment for everybody to understand the importance of water, trees, life. So reducing speeds, increasing micro-mobility options, increasing green infrastructure, like dry wells and cool pavements, it's just so sensitively placed next to the schools. Kudos, Glendale. This is the way we should go. Can you hear me better? Okay, I'm sure you can. So last thing to mention is I wanted to share with you that I participated in the virtual county bikeway master plan outreach, and somebody on that made a comment that in Denver and Boulder, there were bikeways that were placed along storm channels. When they had to close the storm channels due to inclement weather, they had to add alternative routes around schools, or, I'm sorry, along the street. So if we can look into reliable, flexible, opportunity to a street.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our final caller is Cassandra Chalgry. Cassandra, you're on air. You have two minutes.
Thank you very much, Council. I am a strong supporter of this project. This is a forward-thinking plan that will provide a safe commuting option to citizens like me who don't use cars and as well as those who simply ride or walk to enrich their lives. Bike lanes and pedestrian corridors are a critical part of today's modern cities. Thank you so much for this plan. I'm really looking forward to its approval.
Thank you. That's all.
Okay. Discussion from the dais. Questions, comments?
I have a question. Couple of speakers mentioned raised crosswalk by Fremont School. Is it possible to put that into this project, add that into the project at this point?
That's a great question. We can take a look into the implementation of that and see if that's feasible.
Okay, thank you. And go ahead.
I just want to follow up on that. Is that the same thing as a speed table, a raised crosswalk?
Yes, it is, Mr. Mayor.
Same thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. And am I to understand?
I'm sorry, just to add to what Mr. Tavidian said. Depending on the routes, if it's a major emergency route, then it slows down emergency vehicles. So we have to take that into consideration when looking into the option.
Yeah, okay. I understand that. Now, am I to understand that, and this is about the funding, that we received 1.6 million from Metro, correct?
That is correct. Measure R funding. And that's Mr. Sarkisian.
Okay. And yet, the project is going to cost 17 to 19 million dollars. Do we have other funding coming in, or is that going to be in the budget sessions coming up for council?
We do have approximately 1.6 million from Metro for Measure R subregional funding. We have approximately $1 to $2 million from Measure M funding. We have a substantial amount of money from our gas tax funding. We also have Measure W funding for the dry wells and the stormwater implementation measures. We also have sewer funds for the upgrades of the sewer. So that basically rounds up the amount of funding that we have available for this project.
And how much would that be?
Approximately 17 to 20 million, depending on what the bid's coming at.
Oh, we already have the 17, we already have the funding for this?
Yeah, when we go to award the project, we will ask to appropriate those funds from the funding sources.
Okay, great. Let me ask you this. Thank you. Thank you very much. On the traffic signal improvements, and first I want to say the crosswalks, the creative crosswalks are so great, so great. I would have liked to have seen those in Adams Square looking like that. But your traffic signal improvements on that particular slide, Broadway and Columbus intersection, there are no creative crosswalks there. Is there a reason for that? Is this not a very busy crosswalk or intersection?
The picture that was used in the presentation was right before the installation of the creative crosswalks at Broadway, but we will be implementing the creative crosswalks at signalized locations. The specific picture does not have the creative crosswalk.
But they will be there? Because, I mean, it's a pretty, it looks like a really busy intersection, could be.
Are you referring to the Broadway-Columbus intersection? That one has one currently.
Okay, all right, great, great. Okay, I'm just going to say that I think I agree with the speaker that said there's a lot to like about this project, especially the bioswells, the dry well system to capture and treat stormwater runoff. Too bad we haven't had that for the last four days, because we've gotten a lot of stormwater collection. But anyway, so those are my comments, and I'm in favor of this project going forward.
Just a question before I go to my comments. So the gentleman indicated that the outreach flyers were done after council had voted on this and that they didn't include mention of reduction of travel lanes. Can you address that? Or you weren't here, but, and you weren't here.
Stovanisian.
Who was here?
Our city engineer.
So was that true or what? Because if it's true, I have a big problem, another big problem.
Councilmember Najarian, the flyers that went out for that 90% design meeting was to, that meeting happened after council gave us direction to move forward with the alternative of the protected bicycle lanes and the Class II bicycle lanes. So it took us about six months, five to six months, to design that into a 90% plan set. And the whole point of that meeting was to introduce the public back onto the project at the 90% stage, to show them exactly what it's going to look like.
So he's right, and he's holding on a sample, I guess. So the public was denied the ability to come to council before we voted on this, even though you didn't have your 90% engineering done yet. So I have a problem with that. You don't have to answer that. That's not a question.
I don't understand.
But I have a problem.
I would like you to respond to that.
Yeah. The public was not denied in any form to come to the meeting at the 60%, where the council made the decision to choose the protected bicycle lanes. Up until the 60% meeting, we had met with the public at various events, as well as through our website, as well as through our social media, as well as Mr. Tavidian with his constant responses back to the feedback and the questions we were receiving from the public. And so the public had the opportunity to attend that 60% meeting, and the public had the opportunity to attend the prior meetings, approximately 11 engagement events that we had prior to the 60% meeting. And then the public also had the opportunity to attend that 90% meeting in March of 2023.
And Mr. Oganisian?
In the Bicycle Coalition Clubhouse and the Walk Bike Glendale headquarters, or where were they?
Mr. Oganisian, can you confirm that the mailing, the flyers had noted, indicated the addition of protected bike lanes?
The mailing, the flyers that went out for the March 2023 meeting did not have an indication of lane removals, but they did have the indication of bicycle transportation facilities, notably protected bicycle facilities.
Okay, so you didn't say we're taking away a travel lane when it went out to them?
At the 90%?
No, 90%? You did. You said you figured it out at 90%. At the 60%?
No, the 60% was to discuss the bicycle facilities alternative here at council, and the report was published and available online.
But when you say facilities, what are we talking about? You've got some stations somewhere along the route, correct? Were you talking about the bike lanes, specifically the bike lanes?
Yeah.
That would take away a lane of travel?
Correct, yeah. The staff report indicated all the details of the various alternatives.
Okay, I'm going to look, by the way, offline, I'm going to look at that, and I hope that that flyer is everything you say it was.
Mr. Oganisian has confirmed and stated what's on the flyer. The flyer did not specifically indicate removing travel lanes. However, it did mention installation of protected bike lanes that by nature would take away, it would require a lane to be installed.
By nature? Is everyone a traffic engineer that by nature they would understand a protected bike lane is going to take away a travel lane? Wouldn't it be better to say we're taking away a travel lane? I'm just raising that.
That could have happened, but I'm just confirming what Mr. Oganisian said is accurate as far as the flyer is concerned.
I'm not disputing his accuracy.
I would actually disagree with that, because they wouldn't be able to do that until they got direction from us that that's how we're moving forward. And you did take community input before this council approved it in order for you to move forward, so.
I'm sorry, what'd you disagree with?
I disagree with Councilmember Najarian that they were, no. You had community meetings. You informed the public. You wouldn't be able to tell the public what our decision was before we made it. So how is he supposed to, this is, you know, this is something you should have brought up when this was.
Well, for someone who's, for someone who's very concerned about outreach, and I think you're well-placed in being concerned about outreach, I think this is lacking outreach. And I have this right here. I mean, you guys are going to vote the way you want to vote, and in the seminar about chaos on council, they said, "Don't fight with your colleagues." City manager Golanyan said, "Arra, take it easy. We have to vote as a council and work as one." Yes, yes, yes. However, I wanted to make this point, and I'm still very upset that it doesn't say that you're taking away a travel lane. It does say, because you could have taken out parking, it does say you're installing a protected bike lane to improve active transportation throughout the corridor. I don't think this is proper outreach. Proper outreach would say there's a chance that council will be presented with the opportunity to remove a travel lane. That's all I'm saying, because that, I think, would be more forthright and honest with the public. You want my comments, since I'm on a roll, or should I back off and let you go? Listen, they also said, say nice things about the projects and the issues, civility and avoid chaos. There is a lot to like about this. I very much like the sewer and stormwater treatments. I very much like the pedestrian safety improvements, especially around the school. My kids went to Fremont. I like the mid-block signalized bicycle crossing. The creative crosswalks are just darling. I like that. The street improvements, the actual renovation of the surface, I think is great. The intersectional safety is great. The traffic signal, I wasn't that hot about it until I think you mentioned that it meets the warrants for a traffic signal. That's fine, because I don't like putting in traffic control devices just to slow vehicles down. Tree installations, wonderful reflective pavement, I couldn't have done it any better. But I think we went astray when we decided to make a road diet out of this. We're serving a very small percentage of our residents, a micro fraction, if you will, that are actually going to be using that. Now, for everyone that says, "Oh, well, how are the kids going to get to school?" Look at the map. There are many more safer routes to get to Fremont than zooming down Locust Center with or without a protected bike lane. You've got Honolulu, Rose Lawn, drop-down Sierra Vista, Las Palmas. Those are very slow, tree-lined streets. You can ride on sidewalks now for the little kiddies. That's where the bike path, Class I perhaps, maybe even Class II, should have been placed. Now, they say, "Oh, we don't want to do that because it's not as quick a route." Well, now, who's concerned about speed in this case? The bicyclists are, because they don't want to zigzag through the Spar Heights neighborhood. So I think that's a problem. We are going to be faced with extreme frustration. 1998, I don't know who was here in 1998. I keep referring to this. We did the exact same thing for Verdugo Road through the woodlands, and it lasted about two weeks before the Public Works Director was besieged by residents, and the council was besieged by residents, who said they had never heard of this before, they didn't want their traffic lane denied, and they went basically berserk. Now, this is what's going to happen during this. I have to tell you that. This has problems. How's it going to be kept clean, et cetera? So I would ask, of course, you know how I'm going to vote on this, but I would ask, as a courtesy from my colleagues, that when you put those signs up there that this project brought to you by Mayor Dan Brotman, Councilmember Kasakian, Asatryan, Divine, please leave my name off it. If you ever put a little plaque, you know, sometimes they put plaque on buildings, please leave my name off it. I won't be offended. I really won't. And I went even a step further. Someone has to own this, and I ran this by the city attorney, but he slapped me down. I want to call this the Brotman Bikeway. Please. There's one problem, but there's one problem. You have to be dead for five years before we do that. So that idea was squelched. But I just think we're going to run into a lot of frustrated neighbors. I just, that's my experience. That's what I see happening, and that's all I have to say. Okay, how do you really feel about it? All right, Councilmember Asatrian.
Can we attendize removing that five-year requirement?
I mean, I'm saying that in all sincerity. You played a big role in this, and there's no reason why your name shouldn't be attached.
I would be ecstatic.
Well, if we're going to start doing those types of naming options, how about every time a pedestrian or a bicyclist or someone is hit or killed, we say, "This accident happened," as courtesy of the inaction of different council members. I mean, if we want to play theatrics here, you know, my child, my son, doesn't ride a bike on the streets of, "Well, you can rub your hands all you want." Listen, I mean, listen, I don't want to have any of your family. Listen, I mean, listen, I don't want to have any of your family members come up here and berate me for anything I'm saying, so I'll try to maintain decorum as much as possible.
Well, don't insult them, perhaps.
I will, Mr. Najarian, please allow me to speak, if I may. There's been at least 154 collisions on that stretch of road in the last 10 years, most of which you, as a member of this council, were here for. I don't know what we do. Okay, we don't take away a lane. We can malign bicyclists. That intersection, the terminus of Rose Lawn, which Rosemont turns into Rose Lawn, and La Crescena, I travel that at least three times a week, visiting my parents in Spar Heights. Either take my kid, bring him home, we go up there for trick-or-treating. Anyone who's familiar with that neighborhood, and I personally have lived there for at least 10 years, and I used to commute from there to UCLA, will tell you the speeds are atrocious. So I don't know what we do, but I can, I have no choice but to trust traffic engineers. Now, I may live to rue the day that we did that because people will come in and say you took away that lane, but we have to do something to slow the traffic down. Don't want names on it.
Councilmember Satrian?
I love the project. I support it. I don't think it's serving a small percentage. Everyone knows I don't know how to ride a bike. This is not just bicycles versus drivers and cars. This is about creating safe streets. Commend your work. And if I may, I have to add some additional comments about the outreach. We spoke about it extensively when this item first came up. Staff went and did additional outreach. And so I think just showing that one flyer is extremely unfair because in your previous reports, when you brought this project, you did showcase the community outreach you did before we approved this project. And so I'm in full support, very excited for it. Let's go.
Thank you. And I'll just say, first of all, kudos to Public Works, all of you that worked on this. My only complaint will be what you heard one speaker say, is that it took four years. I'll just say that, I'll assume that because it's our first time at this, you know, we had a lot of learning. Hopefully, in the future, we'll be able to move more quickly. But we did, we did more extensive outreach on this project than any other project of its kind that we've ever done in Glendale. So the idea that we haven't done enough outreach is really pretty laughable. It's, we've gone above and beyond. I think there's some segments in the city where a road diet is a tough call. This isn't one of them. We've got many collisions on this roadway. 154 is the number, lots of rear-enders, lots of side swipes. I have a whole list here. That center turn lane is going to make it a lot safer for cars, and we will have a lot fewer accidents, I'm convinced. And that's what the traffic engineers believe as well. So we're gonna make that safer. We're also gonna reduce speeds because, as some people said, the only reliable way to reduce speed is to re-engineer a road. Having cops out there is a temporary fix, but as soon as they're gone, behavior just reverts to what it's always gonna do, right? People will drive to the geometry of the road. If the road is wide, they will drive fast. And so lots of crashes. The work that was done on the impact on travel times, 35 to 55-second delay through the entire corridor is what we expect with one lane removal. 35 to 55-second delay. Estimated 10 to 20-second additional delay at each of the signalized intersections throughout the corridor. What we're seeing here is a very dangerous corridor, a fast-moving corridor. We can make it safer for cars. We can make it safer for bikes. We can make it safer for pedestrians. Very, very little impact on travel times. It's a no-brainer. Okay, not all of them are gonna be no-brainers. And I'm sure I'm gonna support many that are much tougher calls, but this one is a no-brainer. So, and then we've got all these other things, the bioswells, the creative crosswalks, the trees, blah, 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 the slip lane removals, fantastic. The intersection realignments, the crosswalks, everything is, it's really fabulous. So I'm super excited. If there was any way, you know, maybe, maybe if something happens to me over the next little while, I don't know, five years, you said? That doesn't seem fair.
That's the policy that council established.
I really, really do believe that if we come back, we come back here two years or three years from now, we will be very, very happy with what we've done in this location. And none of us can prove that now. Time will tell, but I firmly believe that. And I believe that, you know, I know you, I know you are very, I'm speaking to Councilmember Najarian, kind of very, often go back to this 1998 real. But that was 25 years ago. I do think times have changed. I think we understand different things about road engineering and priority. Our priorities have changed. And it's good. It's good change that we're understanding that we need to design our roads not just about moving cars as quickly as possible, but about getting people around safely in different ways. And so, you know, I don't think if that Verdugo Road situation happened today, we would have that same response. But we don't know. So anyway, I'm 100% behind this, and it sounds like we've got consensus. At least we've got a majority. So if somebody wants to make a motion.
Mayor, I just wanna ask, so to staff, because there was this issue of debris, and I think that there is maybe, you know, some legitimacy to how debris will be cleaned in bike lanes. What is the process for addressing that? What happens?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Kasakian and rest of the council, actually. So we are actually working with our Maintenance Services Department, Mr. Hargrove, our Assistant Director of Public Works, in procuring a mini-sweeper, a hybrid mini-sweeper, that is, that fits within these narrowed roadways. And so we are actively working on that, and we expect to have that equipment in place by April of this year.
Okay, and then in terms of this project, permanency, et cetera, if part of it is to reduce speeds and it's to have, to see the impact of that lane reduction, is there no possibility to have those lanes blocked off? I mean, has anyone done it with cones or K-rails or something more temporary at first to see if it'll have the desired effect before we take on a more permanent approach?
We are trying that with our demonstration project on North Brand. That's gonna be one of our first demonstration projects. During the construction of this project, the constructibility of the roadway has to be done in segments. So during that time, there will be, there will be instances where the roadway will be narrowed down to one lane in this direction. We will also get a feedback and a live feedback of how this is potentially gonna work when the roadway is ready to be restripped.
I mean, I don't know how long it'll take, but I would be interested in seeing if with, just, I mean, plastic cones are gonna be cheaper than anything more permanent that you put out there. And just seeing those cones probably fly all over the place because there are gonna be people who drive there. That alone, I think, should be an indicator of why projects like this are necessary. But I would urge staff to consider that before you start putting shovels in the ground to see what the impact of this will be. I am not as concerned about, you know, people saying, "I cannot get from point A to point B." Because I've sat there, I've stood on that road literally at different times of day to count the vehicular traffic. You are not gonna have backups. You will not have backups. There is not that volume of traffic going on that road. What you do have is people zipping down in miles in excess of 45 miles per hour. But I would like to see that if the reduction would have that impact temporarily. I don't know. Well, I don't know. I'm not, again, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I had brought that point up before in a prior meeting. It would be interesting if we could explore it.
Yeah, if Councilmember Kasakian, Member of City Council, Mr. Mayor, if that's council's direction that would change the course of this construction and phasing of it. So we would need to know now before, like you said, put a shovel in the ground.
It would be the best outreach. I have no.
Cheaper than doing something more permanent.
No, I don't. We waited four years. I think we should move forward.
Well, I will say one thing. I think Quick Builds are a good way to do some of these things. And I think going forward, we should deploy Quick Build, which is these kind of demonstration projects. And there was actually an excellent presentation on the Transportation Committee of SCAG about a Quick Build project in Los Angeles. So I think that is a way to go in the future, to test some of the things out. But I think this one was different because there was the need to reconfigure the roadway. We had to break up the roadway and repave it, right? That's what initially led this off. So this one, you know, we've already done the design, and this one is gonna be kind of a permanent infrastructure project. But we can, and I think we should, consider Quick Builds in other places to test things out. So that's all I would say.
It's just cones, and I think that the project timeline can still move forward. If you could just put it out a week before, just to delineate where it's going to go, or even two weeks before, I think it'll have a significant impact. And it will, you know, present what it's going to look like. I would like to know. It's just my, I mean, what happened? What is the cost if we do it and it doesn't work? I think it will. I want to believe it will, and I do want to reduce the speeds on that road. But can we not do that, just like two weeks prior?
I think we're past that point. But let's do it on other projects.
All right.
All right.
I'd like to move the item.
Okay, it's a good idea.
Okay, so what are we moving here? Do we have?
The resolution adopting the plans and specification.
It's just a resolution. There's no.
Correct. It's just a resolution approving the plan.
No appropriation, okay. Just the resolution. So the resolution moved by Councilmember Asatryan, seconded by Councilmember Devine. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asadrian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
There's no third vote on cones?
Can you put cones without a vote? Can I bring cones and put it?
I, because I'm familiar with that stretch of road, and I do want the speeds to be reduced, I'll vote yes.
Najarian?
No.
Mayor Brotman?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Some pretty meaty items today, okay? We have another one coming.
Our next item. Action item is City Attorney regarding procedure for initiating review of the city charter by a charter commission or committee. One, motion directing staff regarding the creation of a charter review committee.
Okay, Mr. Garcia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The City Council requested a report regarding the formation of a charter review committee. The report provides, the staff report provides some information on past efforts related to a charter review committee, the last one being one that commenced in 2002. It lasted a little over, a little under two years, I think, at which time that committee proposed charter amendments that were forwarded to the council and put on the ballot for the 2005 election. So we're basically, at this point, the council asked for the report. We are seeking direction on whether the council wants to direct us to bring back some more information on, or a resolution establishing a charter review committee, along with the size of the committee and the scope of the amendments. I would note that our prior efforts have usually lasted 18 to 24 months. So given that we have a November election and the council, there are some current charter amendments that the City Council is considering related to elections and compensation and whatnot. If you do form a committee, you could structure it in such a way so that the committee hears at least those first, the ones that are already under consideration by the council, and then that you could also give the charge to that committee to look at a broader review of the city charter, which is, I think, the impetus for this, to look at the whole charter and see what other changes can be made to update it, add to it, improve it. And so that would be one way to go about this. We would seek, obviously, some direction on the size that the council might be interested of this committee being. We would note that the prior committee was 15 members. And I wasn't here at the time Ms. Varpetian was, but having worked on another 15-member committee will tell you that it sometimes can be cumbersome, challenging, getting consensus adds to the time. Council may wanna think of something five to seven range, or maybe even nine. But I would point out that, you know, just our view and our experience has been that a 15-member commission could be a little unwieldy. But again, that's totally, totally up to the council on that. And so that's basically it. We're just seeking direction on whether the council would like to start a charter review committee, sort of, and sort of what the scope would be, and how many members. And then what we will do based on the direction you give tonight. Assuming you wanna go forward, we'll bring back a resolution for you to establish those parameters for the committee, and then we'll get started on the work. And then hopefully, you know, the idea, the best, under best circumstances, maybe you'd have this established by April, and then we could bring the charter members that are currently under review, related to districts, directly elected mayor, those things, and have the committee at least review them and provide whatever input the council desires, if that's how you wanna handle it. I've been answering. Any questions?
Let me, we have one card. We have no callers?
No callers on this item.
How about, if Mr. Meek wants to say a few words, we'll let Mr. Meek speak. And then I think probably Councilmember Kasakian, who is the one that initiated this, can maybe tell us what's on his mind.
Okay, thank you. I'll be very brief. I think that the idea of a committee or commission for this is a very good idea. I do think that it shouldn't just be staff members. You should get some community stakeholders involved in that committee, whether they be neighborhood associations, business groups, just general citizens, but get a few of those in there to get the input from different sections of the city. Thank you.
It would be all community, right?
Correct. It's been, and I wouldn't, you know, the staff would staff the committee, but the committee would be members of the community and stakeholder groups that you identify.
So, thank you, Mr. Meek. And I agree. I think that, as has been the practice with the previous Charter Review Committee around, I think, I guess, since it takes about 18 months to two years for these committees to convene, that would have put it at around 2003 or 2004. It was comprised of community members, I think, past elected officials, if I'm not mistaken. Former Mayor Sheldon Baker was part of it. I see, was he, Ms. Varpetian? No?
Not Baker, but I think Givens.
Former Mayor Ms. Givens was part of it. So that's what I have envisioned, and I think that it would work again if we were to constitute such a group. I'm fine with about nine folks, individuals being on such a committee, perhaps selected entirely by this council, so we can have consensus. We can vote on interested applicants. And I think that it's an important exercise for any municipality to do. It's a bit of housekeeping in terms of how our city and bureaucracy are structured. And I would like us to do it. And I think that the issues that were outlined by the city attorney that we're all considering would be well worth for them to hear as well. I'm sorry?
No, we were, we were saying that Alberto Pocarien was on it, and we're trying to recall how they were selected.
Okay. Well, I think that's well worth for us to consider. You know, we've done similar selections as we did with the tenant landlord committee. And I think that we can, you know, despite some of our back-and-forth with each other here on this dice, I think we do come to good conclusions and make good selections, so.
Can I, I just wanna ask you, what are your thoughts on the items that we've been discussing for November, like districts, elected mayor, salaries, council salaries, and then the civil service?
Absolutely. I mean, I think.
Should we move ahead with those independent of this?
Well, I mean, if it's possible for them to consider it or hear about it, I think it's well worth to have more than just opinions from up here. I know we've done some outreach in the community, but having attended to some of those public meetings, and I think Mr. Durham, I don't, I think Mr. Meek has been to a couple. There really wasn't much input from the public, and it wouldn't be a bad idea to have, when these meetings occur, to see how much public interest in it and for people to weigh in on it.
How about the timing? I mean, how do you feel about hitting the November date versus going through this process?
I mean.
If we had to choose, I mean, if we find that it's, you know, maybe we can have one or two meetings, maybe the committee can discuss it a bit, but we're not gonna have the full in-depth discussion of these items. Would you still be okay moving ahead with it?
It's hard for me to answer that. I generally believe that more public input is better, and having individuals who are interested and experts in it to weigh in, I think, is healthy. To then move forward, a lot of factors, I think, come into that. Obviously, one of the considerations for some of the issues we brought up was potential legal actions and what those implications would be and threats of lawsuits from the past. I think there are other things that we can still consider, and, you know, there may be things after the committee makes those recommendations, we as the elected representatives of the residents and stakeholders of Glendale may still want to add to what is put to the voters. So ultimately, we have that prerogative.
What's the timeline for the November?
So in order to put charter amendments on the ballot for November, the council has to take action in early August. So, and as you know, we're doing, with related to the districts, we're continuing the additional stakeholder outreach, which we've commenced and we anticipate to be done by early April. So, you know.
About the civil service that was.
We're proceeding. We've commenced the meet and confer process with the associations. That's ongoing. We plan on giving council an update at some point on that in the near future. To bring that back to you? Well, certainly, I think around the same time, around April, to give you an update on where that is. And again, that, so the timing in terms of all those amendments, which the council, you know, council put in a fair amount of work on those items as well in the last year. So certainly would be, you know, within your purview to say, okay, we've looked at this, we do want the committee, if there's a charter review committee, to look at them and give us their opinion and give us any suggestion for modifications. But the thing with those, right, is that they're not signed from scratch. You've already had a lot of input. You're getting more public input in a different setting versus the second component of it, which would be a broader review of the charter, which you can take 18 months to look at, and then we can, that way you'll have some time to think about it for the 2026 election. And so let me just add, so I think we'll have more information on the timing when we bring this resolution back to you to establish it. We'll know kind of where the other pieces are going to fall into place, and we'll be able to provide you a little bit more detail on how the council can provide input and give direction to the charter review committee to look at those, the particular ones you've been discussing over the past year, before you make, have to make a final decision in the summer.
Mayor, how long did it take us to form the Rent Coalition Committee, the ad hoc committee that worked on? Just an idea of how long it would take to maybe form this.
It was probably, I don't know. The question is, how long did it take us to form the landlord-tenant?
Landlord-tenant?
It took us a few months. Couple of months at least.
If I recall, the process was to solicit applications, and so then we gathered the application and then back to council.
Okay, sorry about that. And then we came back. I don't know exactly the timeframe. I know that with regard to the first charter committee, there was an outreach to ask people to submit applications. We didn't receive enough applications, brought that report back to council, and then went back out again at council's direction to solicit additional volunteers. So the last time we did this in 2002, I think the question was how did the selection process go? I think each council member identified three people from the final list of appointees and then voted on them. It sort of depends on the interest level of the community.
I didn't make it. They thought I was too mouthy.
Mayor, council members, I believe it's safe to assume it'll take three months or so.
For what, the selection?
Yeah, based on previous experience we've had, two to three months.
Yeah, I mean, it probably wouldn't take as long as the landlord-tenant, because that's more specialized. We had to go find the landlord groups, the tenant groups, and mediator and all that. But yeah, I would say at a minimum, two months.
So if it's ready to go, like in May?
Yeah.
Let's say May, would, that would give them time to discuss the charter amendments for redistricting, for districting and elected mayor, et cetera?
I would say yes, with the proviso that it might be limited amount of time to discuss, and maybe one or two meetings to discuss and make a recommendation to council on those items. But if that's, if the council gives us a direction, we will try to move as quickly as possible to get it, get it in place pursuant to the council direction.
And there is also the possibility that they could make recommendations for the November ballot and then continue to meet to study other issues.
Yes, that would be the.
And I think that would be the idea.
I think so, yeah. So I would go for that to establish the, and I think 15 is too many. And I think, Lucy, you can work with eight or nine, eight, eight or nine?
No. Councilor, a second.
Odd number.
Your recommendation was nine, councilor?
Nine, yeah. Nine's a good number. Nine, nine.
So, at the appropriate time when the motion, motion directing us to bring back a resolution to establish a charter review commission, committee with nine members, the scope to be determined by a city council.
And I would just be curious to know who was on that last committee, if we have that list. That would be interesting.
We'll dig it up and send it to you, and then also provide it.
And also, if we can maybe dig up the ballot from 2005, I'd be curious to know those 20 charter amendments back then, what they were. I was hoping we'd have it in the report. I know that there were some other charter amendments mentioned subsequently, but I'd like to be curious as to know what that lump some group was about. Thanks. I remember voting on it, I can't remember what they were.
No, that was.
Yeah, my only thing is, my hope is that the civil service that doesn't get dragged out further.
No, we are proceeding so that we can get information for you to make a decision to put it on the ballot in November, so.
Okay, those, okay.
So Councilmember Kasakian, do you want to make the motion?
Yes, I'll make that motion for the establishment of charter review committee with nine members.
Second.
We have a second from Councilmember Asadriyan. Let's have roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asadriyan?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Botman?
Yes. Okay, our next item?
Our next item, action item sees management services regarding condemning the ethnic cleansing and genocide of Armenians in Artsakh. One resolution condemning the ethnic cleansing and genocide of Armenian, of the Armenian people of the Republic of Artsakh.
Okay, Mr. Galanian?
Yes, Mayor Botman, members of city council. Councilmember Kasakian had requested and council-directed staff to prepare this resolution condemning the ethnic cleansing and genocide of Armenians in Artsakh and holding the government and leaders of Azerbaijan accountable for the genocide. And we have attached a resolution for your consideration.
I have one edit to the resolution, if I may. On the end, it reads now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Glendale that, I guess there's a typo. I guess the city council hereby fines the leaders of Azerbaijan. Prior to that, I would like it for it to read fines Azerbaijan, comma, and separately the leaders of Azerbaijan. So I would like both the country and the leaders. Right now, as it states, is the leaders of Azerbaijan only. And what I would like for it to say is fines Azerbaijan and then comma, and separately the leaders of Azerbaijan. Because it's only addressing the leaders and not the country.
And there were some other modifications?
Yeah, I had another modification, which is later on in that same sentence, where it says, implores the United States of America to act in accordance with its obligations under the genocide convention, use all its power to punish, I think we need to say who we're punishing, so I would say punish the Aliav regime, or we could say punish the perpetrators, I could go with either.
I would suggest that, along with Councilmember Asadriyan's recommendation, it read Azerbaijan and its political leadership. And then to continue on to yours' suggestion, which I think you were going to reference the Magitsky Act?
Yeah.
To say that, to hold accountable Azerbaijan and the political leadership, it can be stated twice, and its political leadership.
Okay. Well, if you say, because the Magnitsky Act is applied against individuals, so would it be, it should be the Aliav regime or the.
Then we can call it.
Or the perfect, okay.
Well, that's why I was trying to do it and separately, because then your resolution is distinguishing between the country and the leaders. It's not combining them into one.
Okay, so my point would just be here, to punish the Aliav regime, including by invoking the global Magnitsky Human Rights Accountability Act. By invoking, including by invoking the global Magnitsky Human Rights Accountability Act? And then we can continue with.
Yeah, and that's spelled M-A-G-N-I-T-S-K-Y, Magnitsky Act.
What was the verb in that?
Invoking?
Invoking, okay. That's fine.
Take another verb.
No, 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 that's fine. That's fine.
That would be, use all its power, sorry, use all its power to punish the Aliav regime by, to punish the Aliav regime, comma, including by invoking the global Magnitsky Human Rights Accountability Act, and prevent the ongoing effects of this genocide as we've, you know, as we've written. Okay?
There is a T missing in that beginning.
Oh, yeah. The city council.
The city council.
Okay. We have a caller, so let's hear from the caller.
We have Armin Hovanesyan calling on this item. Armin, you're on air, you have three minutes.
Thank you. A immense appreciation to the city council and staff as you all worked deep into this night. My name is Armin Hovanesyan. I'm a board member of the Armenian Bar Association and of the Legal Center for Justice and Human Rights. Two weeks ago, the Armenian Bar and the Armenian-American community of Glendale were once again warmly welcomed by the Glendale City Council during your meeting. We were privileged to be in the company of the honorable Adag Beglariah, the former state minister and former human rights defender of the Republic of Artsakh, and the honorable Geram Stepanya, the current human rights defender of the Republic of Artsakh. After an introduction from the lectern in the well right in front of you by Armenian Bar and Legal Center board member Steve DeDan, the two statesmen rose and spoke in these chambers as living, breathing representatives of the people and of the heritage of Artsakh, all of whom and all of which are recent victims of the full sweep of ethnic cleansing by Azerbaijan. They rose and spoke as survivors of the most recent and continuing genocide of the 21st century. They rose and spoke to inform three-dimensional your consideration of the resolutions before you tonight. They rose and spoke in a city where there is a street named Artsakh at a time when, with horrific irony, there are no Armenians anymore on any streets in Artsakh. They rose and spoke for their own families. They rose and spoke for our families. And indeed, in certain fundamental ways, they rose and spoke for your families as well. As we know, George Santayana, the Spanish-American philosopher, offered a mantra of wisdom which has only seldom been followed since he penned his warning 120 years ago that those who forget the past are condemned to repeat it. However, in the face of the aggressor's moral regression and violent recidivism, we also know that there are momentous and irreproachable upstanders on a personal level, as in Messieurs Beglarian and Stepanya, and on an institutional basis, as in this body of Glendale itself. You have long distinguished yourselves as the bedrock and as the backstop of that special set of freedom-driven values, ethics, and principles that are not only Armenian, not only Artsakhian, not only American, but also entirely universal in application. With your adoption of the resolution in support of Artsakh and of basic human rights, I think we can safely respond to the spirit of Professor Santayana's admonition that the Glendale City Council has not forgotten the past, as it once again raises its collective voice to ensure that the dark past is not repeated in the daybreak of promise for the Armenians of Artsakh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
No, thank you.
Would you?
I would like to make the motion for the adoption of this resolution to stand in solidarity with the displaced population of Artsakh.
For a second?
As amended.
As amended.
As amended, okay. We have a motion, a second. Let's take roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asadriyan?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Botman?
Yes. Okay, what's next?
Next, our hearings. Item A, Public Works Regarding Introduction of Ordinances for Public and Private Indigenous Tree Protections, Continued from January 30, 2024 Council Meeting. One, ordinance amending portions of Chapter 12.40 and 12.44 of the Glendale Municipal Code to update standards and enforcement mechanisms for public and indigenous tree protection. Two, ordinance amending portions of Titles 16 and 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code regarding tree-related zoning provisions. Three, ordinance establishing and modifying administrative citation fines in the citywide fee schedule for enforcement of the public tree and indigenous tree ordinances. And four, resolution of appropriation for outreach services.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of city council, in the interest of time, we'll just go directly to Lauren Clegg, our urban forester, for the presentation.
And before Mr. Clegg begins, I will open the hearing at 10:07 PM.
Members of city council, as background for this item, beginning in 2021, council requested a report on our urban forest. Since then, staff has returned to discuss various aspects of our urban forest raised at council. One of these, in one of these meetings, council increased funding for our tree planting and maintenance as part of a new citywide goal to reach 25% citywide canopy coverage, up from our current estimate of 20%. In March of last year, staff brought these ordinances to council. Council asked for refinements and directed the matter to the Sustainability Commission. We presented to the Sustainability Commission in October of last year, and we return now based on their feedback. Staff has proposed changes to four portions of city code across three chapters, seen here. The first of these changes relate to the planning commission in terms of Titles 16, subdivisions, and 30 zoning. We presented these modifications to that commission on February 1 of last year, and they recommended their adoption to council. Council did not have any additional comments on these, nor did Sustainability, and these also have not changed since our previous visit. As a reminder, we recommend updates to six codes to clarify plant supplemental requirements, make those in line with other city codes, as well as changes to parking lot codes to enable the planting of more than the current limit of 30 listed tree species. Moving on to the two ordinances administered by Public Works, these are our street tree ordinance and our indigenous tree ordinance. Well, we do want to reiterate that based on what we heard from council and what we heard from the community, we've worked very closely with our city attorney's office for effective legal language that will substantially enhance our existing tree protections. And in doing so, we improve definitions and terms. We clarified the sections of code that relate to duties and prohibitions for what people should or should not do to trees. And we think this will affect, increase the efficacy of our ordinances without changing the underlying current intent of those ordinances. The modifications would give the city more tools than ever before to preserve or replace damaged trees. And finally, the revisions would allow for higher administrative citations in the rare cases where trees are removed or destroyed. The community, we hear from them often, they mention concerns over enforcement with good reason, and we believe that these changes will enable the city to more easily enforce violations. So I'll first review some of our previous recommendations and discuss the refinements since council. For our city, our street tree ordinance, we're proposing a change to a city-owned tree ordinance. So what that means is currently, all street trees are protected by code. Park trees, open space trees, other city trees are not protected specifically by code. So we propose expanding that definition. Currently, protecting these trees, we estimate would protect another about 40% of our existing tree canopy in Glendale, thanks to the inclusion of those parks and open space trees. And in fact, Glendale may actually have the highest proportion of our canopy under protection after these changes into the entire state, because Glendale owns about 50% of our entire canopy coverage, based on a recent study out of Cal Poly, Slow, San Luis Obispo. So since our last council meeting, based on the feedback we heard, we were now recommending language to require public posting at least three days prior to any permitted activity. So those notices would be generated with the issue permit, and it would be a requirement of that permit for the public to post that in a visible location. We also made some corrections or refinements in terms of things such as protected zone to better protect trees with the regular canopies, especially in areas with the monolithic parkway where there's no sidewalk. And we also took the council and Sustainability Commission's feedback on citation amounts, which I'll cover separately in this presentation. In terms of our indigenous tree ordinance, which protects six trees, our native oaks, as well as the bay tree and California sycamore, those were reviewed under the same framework I mentioned earlier, in terms of review at the city attorney's office. One of these major changes, when it comes to approved replacement or mitigation trees, when a tree is approved for removal. when a tree is approved for removal, we recommend language to ensure that the trees are planted on private property, because we already do have mechanisms for the city to plant on public property, as well as codify the replacement tree size requirements and the planting method itself. If we're requiring trees should be planted, we would like to be able to require that those trees are set up to survive and planted properly. In addition to that, independent arborist reports are also tweaked to better meet the applicants of both staff and the applicant. Reports should include recommended corrective actions when conditions on site are detrimental to the tree, such as when an arborist inspects a tree and there are recent root cuts or artificial turf under the tree. Those things are obviously detrimental, and the arborist needs to account for those when they report to city. Now, based on council feedback, we are suggesting the same ordinance modifications as with, I just presented with, street trees, including that three-day noticing period. Another change would be to enable city staff to enforce repeated replanting of mitigation trees if those trees die before they reach protected size, which is six inches in diameter. And that's as compared to our previous proposal, where we just say they reach establishment. Generally, that would be two or three years after they're planted. And as a reminder, currently, the city is not able to enforce anything beyond that initial actual planting event. So if those trees die after the planting, the city is not able to enforce a replanting. In terms of fee and penalties, inclusive of both the street tree and the indigenous tree ordinances, based on what council said, we're proposing a major revision to how fees and penalties are assessed. Currently, we rely on the city attorney's office for major violations, and the smaller violations, such as minor legal pruning or materials under a tree, items tied to a tree, we are able to refer those to code compliance. So what we primarily suggest is to address those tree removal, excuse me, to address the tree removal penalties by adding them to our citywide fee schedule and that administrative citation process. That process did not exist at the last time our indigenous tree ordinance was revised. As a reminder, like with many of our citywide fee schedules, the initial contact with a resident is a notice of violation. Afterwards, it would be starting at $400 for those minor violations, and we propose retaining all of these existing penalties, but the addition of significant penalties in the rare cases where trees are illegally removed or destroyed, or damaged to such a point where removal is the only option. So what we propose is to use the appraised value of a tree, like many of our other communities in the area and across the state, plus the cost to plant a new tree, which is part of that appraisal. And using our city's inventory software for our existing city canopy, we can deduce an average value of a given tree to find that appraised value very simply and easily. So previously, for example, when we went to council last time, Public Works had proposed retaining our current ordinance language of a $10,000 fine per tree. Based at council direction, staff raised this to reflect that actual deduced average value of a tree. So as a specific example, if you think of the largest tree in Glendale, a tree over 36 inches in diameter, previously, we suggested that was a $10,000 citation. This would now be a $26,210 citation. So that's the largest tree that you can think of in the city of Glendale would fall under that rare category. And we do think this new penalty framework would have the owners or the tree companies reconsider illegal tree removal. And if the removal does occur, it would give the city a very clear, transparent process by which we can move forward to address that issue, and it'd also give the public a clear understanding of what happens when these illegal tree removals do occur. And again, that's in current code and our proposed code. That is inclusive of the owner and the tree company. Those don't have to be the same penalties. It all depends on the facts of the case. Moving just more generally to program management, we heard many public comments on forestry staffing at our last event. Traditionally, our existing staffing has been sufficient to administer our tree programs. The digitization and improvements to our city's plan review and permitting process that has resulted in the highest number of applications we received in a given year, but we're finding is that also comes with streamlining the process. So it's too early for us to tell what type of long-term impact on staffing the new system would have, but so far indications are good that we're able to continue. And just speaking generally about some of our neighbors, as compared to those neighbors that we have, which have tree protections, Glendale is one of the few of our size which has significant centralized arborist oversight within the city. So to take Pasadena, for example, Pasadena's Public Works Department, they handle public trees, so that's streets and parks. Their planning department will handle permits for their private protected trees with no arborist oversight from city staff. And then the code division over there would handle violations for both separately. And so all those situations are divorced from each other. In Glendale, Public Works obviously has oversight on both city and private indigenous trees. That's why we're presenting them together. But also, our staff in Public Works, we halt many tree violations as the primary line of defense, and we make the specific recommendations to our partners in code compliance, inclusive of drafting the notice of violation letters and recommending the violations or the appropriate fees when necessary.
Quick question, Mr. Clegg. How many arborists does Pasadena have, do you know?
Mayor Bratman, members of City Council, in terms of the planning division, Pasadena...
Altogether.
Altogether. I don't have that number.
Yeah, how many in planning?
They don't have any in planning.
Right.
They contract out for those services when needed.
Okay. Sorry, please continue.
So that would cover our two city, Public Works-managed tree ordinances. Council also directed staff to review possible protections to trees not currently protected or proposed in those two ordinances for protection. We'll cover three options that were previously discussed at council in our efforts to find an approach that could affect, protect additional trees. Ultimately, Public Works does not recommend the implementation of any of these proposals due to the fiscal requirements and the staffing requirements. The first of these proposals is to protect new mature, excuse me, protect new types of species or new trees. Protecting existing, excuse me, protecting additional exotic species wholesale, one of the recommendations that we'd heard from folks in the public over time, that can be difficulty due to the uncertainty of their suitability to Glendale's current or expected climate. For example, we've heard about diadar cedars. They're wonderful trees, but they are struggling in locations irrigated with recycled water, such as in some of our medians. And that's in some ways that we don't see with our indigenous native trees. Our native sycamore, on the other hand, it is being damaged by an invasive beetle, along with hundreds of other tree species. But what we find is that the sycamore is able to adapt to these issues, because they've got local stock growing wild in the forest, and so that's able to help their ability to react to these issues. The same can't be said of many exotic species, many of whom are susceptible to the same pests, but they also come from the same nursery stock. It's a very limited genetic pool for trees, which means they could be less adaptable, especially towards the end of life. In addition, professional tree care is an expense, and residents would bear significant new costs associated with proper maintenance, costs associated with plan review and permitting where these trees are involved. Some neighbors may find that they bear the same costs if trees are located near the property line or growing and shading some of those adjacent properties. In both these types of cases, staffing would be insufficient to administer such a program. And enforcement might be impossible, unfortunately, for some of those large trees. When we're talking about protecting trees, say, of 30-inch size diameter, that cannot be easily identified with a photo, with a screenshot. That would be something that we'd have to physically access the property to assess. When we presented to the Sustainability Commission, they did support the protection of mature tree trees on private property. Previously, staff had also discussed in lieu payments, so that framework would require that anyone could remove a tree. They simply would need to pay a fee to the city to approve that tree removal, with the fee ranging based on tree size. The fee would indirectly fund replanting initiatives on city property. As mentioned with the previous proposal, this would again add some cost to the tree owners on top of those removal costs. Another concern from staff is that a reasonable program would have a carve-out for hazard trees. But determination of a tree of a hazard requires a professional opinion if the tree has not fallen. That would either require staff time or a private arborist report from the owner to make that hazard determination. That's potentially hundreds of new tree applications per year. And finally, in lieu fees may deter homeowners from planting trees altogether. We have seen this come to pass with our indigenous tree ordinance. We waive all fees if people agree to plant replacement trees on site, and especially over the last couple of years, we've seen a trend where people prefer to pay those fees where the city would plant the trees elsewhere on city property. Finally, the last program, as presented last March, Public Works had previously recommended a program where private trees are nominated for protection with approval by the owner. After additional review, staff does not recommend implementation of this program. Again, the staffing and the fiscal requirements will be significant, as with any of the other programs. If a tree is near a property lane, again, it's the same situation where adjacent properties may be impacted in terms of how they're able to be developed before they go to plan review. It's also unclear how many trees this would actually protect. We don't have an idea of the interest in specific community for protecting these trees. Of course, expanding the program to allow for non-owner nominations or protection by city designation directly, that's a complex issue if it goes against the owner's wishes, and we don't want to introduce a program that would lead to conflicts between neighbors of the city or neighbors themselves. So in summary, returning to the codes, the street to city tree ordinance and the indigenous tree ordinance, these code changes and the related citywide fee schedule changes, they're intended to increase the efficacy of our existing programs. We believe that these enhanced protections for our existing ordinances will give more tools for our staff to preserve trees, better respond to violations earlier in the process with the mean to resolving those violations more quickly, and also lead to more effective tree replacement strategies where we can actually enforce those replantings. We're proposing the strongest measures that can be enforced using our existing city staffing programs. And again, these protections would cover half of our trees in the city, half of the canopy, because Glendale is so densely forested, especially thanks to our streets and parks and open spaces. Given our existing staffing and fiscal resources, we don't recommend the addition of additional, protection of additional tree classes. Finally, the improvements of these existing ordinances, while they don't change any of the underlying intent, they would require a comprehensive outreach effort, as our existing material would be in need of update. We recommend a systematic review of our current materials, providing revised information that we would like to reach every resident in Glendale. So to that end, Public Works recommends hiring a public outreach consultant to help us guide these efforts. With that, that's the end of the presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that council would have.
Okay. Ask a question. So for the public outreach...
Okay, you want to ask? Yeah, because I've, we have two cards and we've...
For the public outreach, there was 134,000 allocation for that. Is that just for one person, or is that for the person and the work that they would do and programs? Or is that like just the base salary?
Counsel, counsel Kasakian, that number was based on the recent Integrated Waste, three-year outreach group in terms of the new programs, and Dan Hardgrove can provide greater detail about that.
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, council member Kasakian. Yeah, this is, it's based upon an outside consultant, a third-party consultant, and that's based upon the experience we had with Integrated Waste, and the consultant was SGA. And looking at a multimedia platform for outreach and preparing...
But it's not the salary. It's not like we're hiring someone.
No, it's not. It's not a...
I just want to be clear on that, because have we looked into, instead of hiring full-time arborists, to maybe hire anyone on an hourly basis or partner with any groups that may be able to help provide the services an arborist would otherwise? I know like there's the Payne Foundation that does local flora.
Yeah, I think there's a level of authority and knowledge that you get from certified arborist that I don't know that we would have with a, like a nonprofit association.
What's the going rate for a certified arborist?
Oh.
Ballpark.
Maybe around, depending on the type of service you're asking them to do, tens of thousands of dollars if you're doing a consultant-type job.
That's a month.
Oh, month? No, no, that would be the, that would be the per project.
But the salaried arborist...
The question was the salary.
Oh.
The salary of an arborist, if the city was to consider adding an arborist.
I'd have to, we'd have to look at, I don't know that right off the...
Thank you. It'll be fully loaded, probably around 150, 160,000.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
Okay. Any pressing questions, or can I go to the speakers? Let me do that. Okay.
I need clarification on this in lieu payment for removals. I don't think, if you can...
Absolutely, council member. Specifically with in lieu and mitigation, are you referring to the indigenous tree ordinance, or would you like me to just go over that topic one more time?
Just go over that topic one more time, I think it...
Sure.
I'm trying to understand why. Okay, go ahead.
So I'll start first with our city tree ordinance proposal. So currently, if there's a tree in a parkway or even in a park where an adjacent development would impact that tree to the point it requires removal, we don't have any ability to require that developer to pay the city to plant that tree elsewhere. If, say, the improvements, such as a new driveway, if it goes from a single-family home to an apartment complex, there might not be space for a tree in front of that parcel. So the city currently has no way to receive a fee from that developer for the city to plant that tree elsewhere, one-to-one in lieu. And so that's the proposal with our city tree ordinance. In terms of our indigenous tree ordinance, which would cover the oaks, the bay, the sycamore on private property as well, when somebody removes a tree due to development or due to various other situations where a tree might be removed, the options for residents are to plant on site as mitigation. So you remove a tree, you can plant one tree, two trees. It does depend on the specific situation. Or those residents can opt to pay a fee to the city, that's in our citywide fee schedule, where they would then pay that fee to the city, and the city would plant those trees elsewhere within our public rights of way or our parks. And that's something that's also in our greener Glendale plan, and that's something that we track through that process.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, let's hear from our speakers. We've got Stephen Meek and Joanna Pringles. We'll start with Mr. Meek.
Good evening again. I'll be brief again. I'm in favor of the ordinance or program here. I do think the three-day notification is a good idea, but not when it's this big. You'd want something that's large enough that people notice it when they're walking or driving past, that there's a sign there, that something has to get cut down. That way, also, mature trees, if they're damaged or cut and need to be replaced, or even just damaged and let go, need to be protected. Right now, it seems like the only way we can protect them is if myself or someone else actually calls and say, hey, somebody's cutting down a tree or ran into a tree. I think we need more people in this program, arborists or semi-arborists, you know, to be able to inspect things, going to the job sites and telling the people, hey, you need to protect this tree. I've talked to different neighbors in my neighborhood and Chevy Chase Estates and other places where, you know, somebody wants to build their house, and they just go ahead and clearcut before they even talk to the city. And I think that needs to be protected by the city in this tree ordinance. I don't want to protect the palm trees. I don't believe they're trees anyway, but those, I don't think feel, need any protection because they're not native to California, and they don't really provide shade in the canopy way. That's all I need. Public outreach is also very good. If we could even have our programs at our different events, to have somebody there and explain the trees and how to protect them and how to plant them and prune them even. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything we could say about his point on the signage, when we place these notifications? I don't know what it looks like. Is it on the tree?
Mayor Bratman, we've been in preliminary discussions with IS, and so there isn't a final design, but the discussion has been that this would be the size of a normal piece of paper posted at the edge of private property, either on a stake tied to something. And that's because ultimately, the owner or the person pulling a permit needs to print this, and this would allow, this size of paper, standard printer paper, would allow for people to do that without having to print at larger sizes. So under the current proposal, we don't specify the size, but our current intent would be a size about this big to have that notice.
Okay, so not like a design review?
Correct. It would not be a big poster with double stakes. This would be similar to our existing tree protection fencing signage with a bright red outline that says notice and the details of the permit.
Okay. Joanna Pringle.
Thank you. My name is Joanna Pringle, and the board of... My name is Joanna Pringle, and the board, the Board of Glendale Environmental Coalition asked me to comment on their behalf. We thank you for introducing all these changes to the ordinances, and we thank Lauren Glick and the Urban Forester for all their work to beef up protections on Glendale trees. We also want to thank you for planting thousands of trees to restore our tree canopy to what we had here 20 years ago, plus 5%. We applaud the focus on South Glendale where there's been a terrible lack of trees. But we urge you to adopt, sorry, we urge you to adopt all the changes to the ordinances, but we urge you not to stop here. Please do more to stop the trend of losing mature trees to carelessnessness. We need additional protection for mature trees. We need additional sustained communication with residents about why mature trees are of extreme value to the city as a whole. 134,000 just can't be enough. How many newly planted trees make up for the loss of a single mature tree? How long does it take? The models used in the workshops for the city's climate action and adaption plans show that Glendale will go from the current three days a year of extreme heat to 35 days a year over the next few decades. Imagine the compounding effects of the heat from that many days. The workshop models show there will be fewer rainy days, but when it rains, we will have atmospheric rivers like the ones we've just had, or one we just had, and increasingly stronger ones. Our city will rely heavily on trees as a line of defense, for cooling, for stormwater capture. We are sure Lauren and the experts on the Urban Forester can determine what's needed to increase protection of mature trees if you make it a priority. Is it more arborist for the fourth-largest city in Southern California? Could we be like La Cañada, Pasadena, South Pasadena, San Marino and protect more species? Or could we protect trees over a certain-sized trunk diameter? Could bioswales solve the issues with the diodars and the aleppo pines? They're the experts, not me. Most of the diodars and aleppo pines and other mature trees were planted when Glendale was developed, gifts from our Glendale forbears over 100 years ago. So let's be another generation to plant trees that our grandchildren will benefit from. Let's do our equal best to invest in mature trees too, for us and our children now, and let our mature trees keep Glendale a hospitable environment for those newly planted trees to get established and thrive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and we have some people on the phone, three?
Yes, we have three callers. Our first caller is Ron D. Werner. Ron D., you're on air, you have three minutes.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor Brotman, council members and staff. I am Ron D. Werner, Vice President of the Adams Hill Neighborhood Association and a Commissioner on Sustainability Commission. After so many council meetings where staff was directed to develop a plan to do more to protect our existing trees, it's disappointing, to say the least, that we are essentially back to square one. We have no plan to protect a single additional private tree, such as the wonderful heritage trees that give our city a measurable environmental, aesthetic, cultural, and economic benefit. The current proposal could even prevent the city from reaching its goal of restoring our 25% urban tree canopy in our lifetimes. The decrease in the city's urban tree canopy over the past decade proves that we need to rethink how we protect trees. And protecting the trees we already have is obviously the most efficient means of restoring the canopy the quickest. The proposal you just heard was scaled back significantly from what was presented to Sustainability Commission last October. That one had the legacy tree program, which was supposed to be a compromise compared to having a protected tree list like the city of Pasadena, which has over 100 protected species on it. And even with the legacy program as part of it, the commission still wanted to add large shade trees to the plan to address the severe deficit of trees in the most underserved parts of the city. This recommendation was also scaled back to nothing. This is an environmental equity issue. The tree deficit is the worst in South Glendale, which has a higher average temperature, mostly due to the lack of vegetation here. This is also the area with the highest concentrations of sensitive receivers, in other words, residents who are most vulnerable to the effects of climate change, many of whom they don't have air conditioning or can't afford to run it during heat waves because of the high cost of electricity. Our city leaders and public works have a moral obligation to support environmental equity and protect vulnerable populations by reversing the disparity of tree canopy coverage in all census tracts in the city. Staff suggested hiring an outreach consultant to inform the public about the ordinance and proper tree care. Wouldn't the $134,000 be better spent contracting with certified arborists to help protect existing trees? We do support staff's recommendation that the ordinance should include requiring developers to submit an arborist report with their plants and metals to alleviate the burden on staff. A misestimated cost would be a tiny fraction of the cost of developing the property and would give the developers useful information about the trees on their site. Tree protection is critical to helping council achieve its priorities of safe and healthy communities for all, economic vibrancy, environmental equity, and a restored tree canopy. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ron D. Our next caller is Mary Lacroix. Mary, you're on air, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Brotman, council members and staff. I'm glad to see everybody looking healthier this week. I'll make this brief, thank you for your late nights. I wanted to make sure that the council did receive the Verdugo Woodlands West email from Kathy Yurka, as well as all prior emails from our neck of the woods regarding this issue. We are definitely in favor of a new and improved ordinance, but I must say, listening to last speakers, they make some excellent points. And I'll just say, to the extent that there needs to be any tweaking in addition to what's already been put on the board, maybe some additional time would be needed because, in the immortal words of a TV character, no half-measures. And also, just remember, there's the best time to plant a tree is 20 years ago. So we've got to get moving. All right, thank you, and have a dry evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Victoria Valentine. Victoria, you're on air, you have three minutes.
Yeah, hi. I heard a little bit of the presentation. I'm shocked you're mixing oranges with apples. It's mishmash, the biggest mishmash. I thought you said this was indigenous tree plan. I live in a canyon, I walk down the canyon, I see the oak tree. Oh, there is a million-dollar profit standing here. Oh, there's a sycamore tree. Oh, yeah, that's $1 million for sure. Okay, you want that tree, then pay $1 million, and you can have it. You can have that tree. It would be good to get outreach information from experts, state, county, conservancy, for free as to the rights and the plan of protection that the city has to enforce. It's on the books, they don't enforce it. It's on the book. Somebody has to open up that book. Remember, some councilmen swore to protect trees, keep Glendale green, and doing the opposite. Protecting trees protects wildlife rights and corridors. I have only seen one deer last year. It's very sad. How many trees have you planted so far in 2023? There's only a small area left where the indigenous trees thrive, and they cannot be thrown in with the thousands of city trees that don't fit in a canyon. There has to be two different hearings here. Restrictions to what trees can be planted, there's a lot of things. But I might, I need to ask Mr. Manager, Mr. Rubik Galanian, what this LA County is a state of emergency, did you declare the city state of emergency? Where can the citizens go and ask for the funds to, since the shoddy buildings are not waterproof? They don't protect us from water, the shoddy buildings that the city allows to be put on. And where is Mr. Yasdan Armanian's chair? What happened to that gentleman? Anyway, I'm sorry, but the report is just insane. I couldn't even listen, it was upsetting. Open the book and file and enforce the law. Thank you.
All right, our next caller is Gayane. Gayane, you're on air, you have three minutes.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I'm calling, I'm not sure if what I'm going to talk about is in regards to the ordinance of 9A, but it does have to do with public and private tree protection. I was wondering if the city of Glendale has planted or plans to plant trees that are bee-friendly? And also, if they do, would it be located in an area where, of course, when it's the bee season, you know, people don't get stung? The reason why I'm asking is because I'd like to make sure that the public and private trees that are bee-friendly to be protected and to, you know, have that ordinance in place. Been a resident in Glendale since 2008, and we have trees in the street that every season of the bees, it was massive, massive, thousands of amounts of bees that would come to the trees because of the little flower that it would bloom. After so many years, you barely see any trees. There was one time, the last few years, the bees are all over the ground. I don't know what it's for, obviously, it's probably fumigation from, you know, farms and stuff like that, but is there a way that we can try to keep our ecosystem healthy by having more trees be planted that are bee-friendly? There are many, many good effects with the bees, as you all know. It is very healthy for the ecosystem, whether it is for other trees and plants and flowers throughout the city of Glendale. I don't, it's a very small subject that nobody really talks about, but it is a very, very massive, massive importance of having to protect trees that are bee-friendly and maybe even add more trees. And I would like the council members to address that if possible. Thank you.
Thank you, and that was our final call.
How about bees? What can you say about that? That's a subject that we haven't heard about for a little while.
Mayor Brotman, members of city council, I think what the resident was referencing was something that I'm not quite prepared to speak on in terms of, I know there's bee communities. I'm not familiar with those particular categories. However, one of our considerations when we plant trees is the flowers of those trees. Many of our most common trees have flowers that bees pollinate. Again, it does vary per tree. I would also say that our indigenous trees are, again, the best provider of habitat for our wildlife, not just bees, but also some native wasps that don't sting, that pollinate those flowers as well. And this is obviously something with the appearance that goes hand-in-hand with the bees, but we're not making any specific, you know, bee-friendly trees. I'm not aware of any list there.
Okay. All right, so let's hear comments, questions.
Few comments. First, a little bit of history. So our indigenous tree ordinance was developed not because of a little snip here or a little snip there. There was a community called Mountain Oaks, which was sort of in the Locustina area, and it had a flat area that was populated with oak trees, perhaps 15 to 20. And the developer, it was his private land, in an attempt to make it easier to develop, came in and did a clear-cutting of those oaks. And that's what got everyone pretty upset. That was in the mid-'90s, right before the Verdugo Road Diet. But later, fast forward, I think I can say, in all honesty, no one has caught the brunt of the tree, indigenous tree ordinance more than I have. And the reason I say that is, maybe you haven't heard this story, Dan. So around 2007, I was a newly minted mayor, we had already developed our indigenous tree ordinance. And I know you guys were here, you were an assistant city attorney and a resident in the Whiting Woods area, either through direct direction or through inadvertence, had a tree crew do a very bad hack job on, I think the tree was an oak, if I'm not mistaken. So, oh, we've got a, was it multiple trees? Oh, well, we've got our indigenous tree ordinance, and it's $10,000 for this cut and $5,000 for that cut. And when we added it all up, it was in the tens of thousands of dollars.
Hundreds.
Hundreds. It was over $100,000?
Three, $300,000.
Okay.
That was John and Ken, is that what we're talking about?
Well, that's how we got into the fight. So John and Ken, they went and complained to John and Ken about this. Can you believe this stupid city of Glendale, blah, blah, blah? And I called out John and Ken on the dais. It's like, leave us alone, you know, we're administering our city. And of course, they couldn't leave it alone, and they came back and accused me of being at strip clubs instead of being at council meetings. And it got kind of crazy. Eventually, we, no one was fired, although they probably should have been. We sort of walked back the ordinance, and we put a lot of discretion then in the arborist. And I think the city manager offline said, look, don't go crazy with your fines, you know, keep the ordinance. We still maintain the three trees, the indigenous trees as protected, but it didn't go too far. So that's just a little bit of history. But let me ask you another question. I've looked at historical photos of Glendale, and there are no trees in Glendale. I mean, maybe in the canyons, you can see they're there. I mean, isn't it true that right now we have more trees in Glendale than perhaps in recent history? The tongvas weren't cutting down those trees. It was plains, it was like a prairie in some of those photos from the '20s and the 1910s, even the 1900s. I mean, it looked like Nebraska prairie land. There just weren't any trees at all, a few spotted oaks as you got up a little bit higher. So isn't it true that currently we have more trees in Glendale than we've ever had in recent history?
Councilmember Gayane, I mentioned that earlier. We in Glendale have the most trees that are under city protection out of any community in California. We just narrowly beat out San Francisco, so we do have more.
But just in general, protected, unprotected, I mean, look at those photos. It's like, it's prairie land. Now we have a fully wooded, look at the woodlands. The woodlands were not always wooded, it was prairie. South Glendale was, you know, you could see from, you know, they're taking a picture from tropical towards the mountains, and it's like a flat line, there's no trees at all. So I'm not sure where we're really going. We shouldn't say, oh, our trees are being decimated, we have no trees anymore. I think we've had more, and I challenge anyone who says that we are at a deficit of trees. I think we currently have more trees than ever in recent history, in the last 300 years now than in the past. I think, look at the pictures.
No, but the report...
Pictures don't lie.
The report, well, pictures are a point in time, and I don't know what that point in time is and what predated that and what caused the, whatever cutting down of trees took place before.
I mean, it's good that we have trees, but before it was prairie.
But I mean, you, I know, when we first got your report about the urban canopy, you did tell us that we've lost about 10% of our tree cover over the last decade, going from 25% to 21%. Now we're trying to make that up to get back to 25%. So we are down pretty significantly, and we're just trying to get back to where we were. That's all. Just as a point of fact, I think we were somewhat better, right, a decade or 15 years ago?
Correct, Mayor Brotman. We did the study going back to 2000 of our tree canopy in terms of the quantity of trees, and we, what you stated was correct in terms of the deficit from 25% to 20% of our existing canopy. Like many urban areas, as we densify, we plant the trees in areas that might not have had trees before, especially in those urban environments. Of course, Glendale does also have riparian corridors with the washes, which are now channelized. um, those previously would have trees. Um, and of course, there were large open spaces with trees interspersed. That's our Valley Oak, which is currently protected. There might be two in Glendale, um, that I've seen, but they're, they're still protected.
Two Valley Oaks only? Wow.
Okay, oh, Councilmember Satrian.
I wasn't on council, but I actually remember that, I was following it.
You're still in college, probably.
I was at ANC Glendale down the street, started in two thousand six, so.
Wow.
Um, I remember the videos that went around, so, you know, when we saw, when I saw in this ordinance the ten thousand cap being removed, I actually had a flashback of that video. So how do we, what's written in here that prevents that from happening again? Can you, can you speak to that?
Councilmember, uh, so the main difference is, we're not proposing a change back to what we did before, where a, a cut to a tree, a hack job would lead to a citation of that, that level. Um, what we are proposing are, is when somebody destroys a tree, removes it entirely, um, that's when these, these hefty citations would trigger. Um, so, as I mentioned, if, if someone removes a tree over twenty, or thirty-six inches in diameter, which is, there's probably one percent of trees in Glendale that are that big, um, that would, that would trigger that highest twenty-six thousand dollar citation. So these are, these are not common violations. Uh, we, we probably get one to two every year. Um, and of course, these citations do not just be issued without full review of the facts, that referral to code compliance, um, to, to determine that this is the right course of action, there weren't any other factors involved. So these would be rare citations, um, only issued in certainty when trees are destroyed.
So what would be the cap? Like, what's the most someone would be fined?
So the, the cap in our ordinance would be the twenty-six thousand dollar, uh, two hundred and ten for the, the removal of a single largest tree in Glendale.
Okay, and if someone can't pay that amount, and it's due at, at the time of?
Right, that goes through our, our code compliance process, so there's, there's appeals, um, that, that would be handled through the community development department. Um, so they do have that, that thirty day window, um, and then at that point, it would be community developments' discretion of how they proceed.
If someone cut down a tree and they don't have, what happens if they don't have the money? I mean, we're talking about a significant amount of money. Not that I'm condoning anyone cutting down, down trees, I'm just saying, playing out the scenario in my head. Someone didn't know, cut it, um, I want to give them the benefit of doubt, they can't afford the twenty-six thousand dollars, what happens?
As I mentioned, Councilmember, this will go through community development, so I know there's processes that I can't speak to exactly when, when that happens. But this is, in, uh, in our current process, what happens is that goes to the city attorney's office, and our city attorneys would negotiate. I don't think that's the case with this, this proposal. This isn't the case with this proposal.
Mr. Garcia, is there an opportunity to put somebody on a payment plan for twenty-six thousand dollars?
Uh, Councilmember, uh, Satrian, so, as in, the administrative citation of civil penalties, that can go a number of different ways. It can be after they're assessed and they have been paid, they, they get, there's a process to refer to collections. Um, and at that point, there's an opportunity to negotiate, but we, the normal process is to let it go through the, the system with the warnings and the citations, and then if they're not paid, then, then to go through, and, and there's always an opportunity for, uh, somebody to attempt or request a, a discussion, negotiation about it. Um, but typically, the normal situation absent that is, it will go to collections for the administrative citation part.
Okay. Um, and then, do we need to give feedback on the other items on here that, that is not recommended by staff?
I think, yes, we, this is an opportunity to comment on any aspect of the report.
Okay. I mean, so, I would definitely say anything that relates to private properties, um, and adding additional species and what people can and can't have, and even the, what was it called? The Heritage Tree Program, what, I think that's government overreach. I'm not here to tell people what kind of trees they should have on their properties and, um, what they can and can't cut down. Maybe they want to build a pool, I don't know what they want to do with their backyard, but that's their property, so. Um, definitely not for adding more, um, to the list either. So I think staff had already not recommended any of these, so I'm, I'm with staff on that.
Councilmember Satrian?
I think that, I think that there's a lot here that is very positive. I do think that, um, uh, I, uh, support the idea, obviously, we want our tree canopy to be increased. I support the idea of, um, before any major projects on a site for the tree plan to be submitted along with that for protection of, of trees, especially, particularly the, the indigenous trees that are protected, that we want to, um, preserve. I am concerned about, again, excessive fees and some people weaponizing this against neighbors. Um, some people will, you know, report it out of, uh, you know, positive, good intentions, but some people will just be, you know, I don't like that person, and I see him trimming their tree, I'm gonna call and, and use up city resources to come and police that. So I think that, you know, we keep coming back to education, education is going to be an important component. I'm glad that there was an education component, uh, written into this, but also, we, we should look at creative ways, maybe not full-time arborists, but other ways of, um, helping neighborhoods figure out what trees are protected. In addition to that, we should also be leading the way ourselves with all of our empty tree wells around the city, uh, making sure those are replaced right away. Too often, you know, both in the downtown and in various neighborhoods, there are wells where you could tell there was a tree there at one point, and there's no longer a tree. Now, whether those trees attract bees or not, you know, I could go either way on that. I'm, I'm somewhat indifferent, where there's a lot of different, different nice trees, I guess, out there, and I don't know which one does attract bees and which ones don't. Um, there is something to be said, it's interesting what Councilmember Najarian noted, because it seems as though, when you do look back, uh, at those old photos, it is a pretty arid area. So was this area a naturally forested area, or is it, was it as Councilmember Najarian described, it was more like a plains?
Councilmember Kostakian, obviously, Glendale extends from the river to the San Gabriel, so there were forests. Um, we, we see that evidence in our open spaces. Um, so for example, we have a lot of small oaks that are, are mixes between Ingleman Valley and the small oaks that naturally grow in those areas. And so we know that formerly there were, like in Pasadena, the, the Ingleman Oak grew all over the north part of our city, um, especially Glen Oaks Canyon. Um, those trees were all cut down. Um, I, I would say that the photographs that, that are being mentioned, those, those did come after the settlement of the Spanish. Um, most of, of what forests existed, if they, they did exist, were cut down for firewood, um, turned into, to ranchos. So there, there is, some areas of the city were, were certainly like that, and other areas were wooded. Uh, the woodlands in particular is interesting to me. There was the Oak of Peace, um, which was a coastal oak, and if you look at the photos, there's, there's grass behind it. Um, I, I don't think that was the native environment that that oak was growing in before the, the Spanish came here, based on what's happened since, uh, in terms of regrowth from those oaks. So we certainly have more trees than we, we did then, that, that is absolutely true.
It's a very cool discussion, this is very fascinating, and I'm learning a lot. Um, my, my main purpose is, you know, I, I understand the desire to bring the hammer down on people who are bad actors who will cut down trees, but what I'm more interested in, if we want to increase the tree canopy, is how do we incentivize, um, people to plant trees and grow them? And I don't know if, you know, we really got into that. I think that is ultimately how we get people to become, um, stewards of, of the environment around them and, and help increase, uh, the tree canopy. Planting trees is great, we do it on Arbor Day, um, through the, is it Glendale Beautiful Program, or? But you know, outside of that, you know, what are we doing to encourage? And I know Water and Power, actually, I think, has a program that helps, uh, people plant shade trees. But most people don't know what kind of tree to necessarily plant, and I do think that we should also educate on what not to plant. Obviously, some trees end up causing, I, Mr. Meek, I, I do like the way palm trees look on the background, uh, as a backdrop to a Southern California sunset. But I do understand that they also cause many, many problems, as we've seen with these winds and these rains, as those palm fronds descend down onto people's heads, so I, I share some of your concern. But there's also other trees like eucalyptus that are not native and are harmful to local species. So inasmuch as we can encourage and educate, educate and encourage people to plant the right kinds of trees and tie an incentive to that, to homeowners and property owners, um, I think that's one of the keys to success. So that's where I'm at, I, and, uh, are there any other outstanding areas that we're trying to find some sort of common ground on, or?
Um, no, I think right now, it's, um, just general comments. I mean, we have, we have the two ordinances for, we have three ordinances for introduction, right? Uh, one of them is a fee schedule related, right? And then we have a resolution of appropriation, right? Um, so we have those four items. Um, and, but I think beyond that, we're kind of commenting on some of the things that are not included that staff is saying, you know, giving kind of their arguments for why some things that may seem, idea, you know, ideally, we would like people to do, why they're not as simple as we might think they are. Um, so we can talk about any of those, and I do have some things to say, but I want to make sure I make the, make the rounds first.
No, go ahead, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, I was, oh, you want to? You go, you go.
Okay, well, I, I, I agree with, uh, Councilmember, uh, Kostakian that there's no way that we want to discourage our residents from planting trees, that's for sure. And I, I need, and I think if we're going to, uh, have a fee, uh, like a twenty-six thousand dollar fine for cutting down a tree, that we better have a lot of outreach, a lot of, um, uh, education to the public so that they know exactly what they'll be dealing with. I real, actually think that's a little draconian, twenty-six thousand a tree, but, um, you know, if my colleagues agree. Uh, what about, there, you know, there were some really good suggestions, and I'm trying to choose a couple that may not need extra staff, but it, maybe you can help me on this one. One, uh, suggestion that I particularly liked was to require arborist reports with planned submittals. And that would be on the, um, onus of the developer, and I think that might be a good idea. And I also think that we need to have, and I'm trying to, to suggest things that don't take extra staff, although this would, and that is to follow up on the plans that are submitted when they are actually developed and planted, that they're really there. Um, and the other one, um, uh, you know, it seems like there were a lot, that's the one plant, the one idea that I do like. I asked about the Deodora, and you mentioned, uh, in the, in the briefing that it's not doing well, and I have seen them around the community, and they are looking, uh, really, uh, kind of sad, drying out and brown, and people are chopping them off and stuff, so, um, I, I understand that. But I, I do would, but I would like to see one day, uh, that tree, and, and was suggested the Aleppo pine, maybe. But again, the bottom line here is that with all of these good suggestions, the one thing that we need is more staff. That, that goes without question. And I think in order to, to be able to, um, put all of these ideas, um, the additional protections that you talked about, and the reason that you, that you, that staff did not recommend them was because of staff. And so if we want to look at those again, I think that during the budget hearings, I think, uh, council had best look at, um, hiring more staff and maybe make, um, uh, put in, um, a, a line item for more staff, whether it's an arborist or a, or a, or an hourly, or, um, but I think if, if we want to see this all come to fruition, or volunteers, or a, a contract out or something, but, um, yeah, that's, that's the bottom line. Um, and again, you know, the one thing I don't ever want to see the city do is turn neighbor against neighbor. And I think any kind of complaint-driven, um, uh, kind of process is, is bad for the city and bad for, and we had that with the parkways, uh, in front of the houses, and we, we had to remedy that by changing the ordinance, so let's be careful about that. So I, I think enforcement's very important, and the only way we're going to get that is with more staff. So those are my comments.
Okay. Do you want to, can we come back to that?
Yeah.
Okay, um, just from the top, um, I support all the, all the recommended changes to the ordinances. I think you've got the street tree ordinance, what you want to call a city tree ordinance. Uh, I, you know, I looked over all those, I support all those. Indigenous tree ordinance changes, um, you've got the municipal code, chapter six and chapter thirty, all good. Sorry, I don't want to start over. Basically, I'll just summarize by saying I support all the, um, proposed changes to the ordinances that you've shown us, um, and to the, uh, administrative citation fines in the, uh, citywide fee schedule. So I'm good with all of that. My, my one concern is, you know, the same thing you're hearing from, you heard from the Sustainability Commission, you're hearing from some members of the public, is just the impact of development on our canopy, because here we are trying to get from that twenty-one percent up to twenty-five percent. As we're working hard, you know, I worry sometimes that development is, is pushing in the opposite direction, and it's going to, you know, make us have to kind of, you know, redouble our efforts. And, you know, one project which is just an example, and I don't mean to beat up on it, but it's something that we've probably all heard about, is that Glendale Gardens Apartments. There's a, a project proposed on Central, and, um, that place is, you know, Councilmember Kostakian, I know, knows that place very well. Um, it's just full of trees. So if somebody comes in and wants to build a big, um, housing project, and we want the housing, it's all good, but all those trees are going to go. And you know, when you multiply that across Glendale, that, that hurts, right? Because we know, regardless of whether Glendale was wooded or not wooded, or whether we're behind or, or above, you know, we know that with climate change, trees are going to be our, you know, you know, our, our, our life vest in a sense that, you know, we really are going to rely on trees to do so many things for us. And they're just so, so, so valuable. So what do we do? Um, what do we do to make sure that we minimize the loss through development? And, you know, I had originally thought, oh, let's just protect more species, let's protect anything that's bigger than thirty centimeters, and, and I, and I get what you're saying, all the reasons you're saying there are challenges there. So I guess what I would just find is, what I would say is, I would like us to be more systematic in how we track the loss of canopy through development, whether that's, you know, using GIS, mapping tools, or in some other way. But for us to really be able to see year by year how we're doing as a city to meet our goal, and how much we're losing through development, and what that, what that means for us, and whether, you know, maybe in a couple of years, we need to rethink, um, some of the ways we protect trees on private property. Because those trees have, you know, services they provide to the whole community, not just to the owner of that property, even though it sits on that particular property. So that's what, you know, I would say, I talked in the briefing about this with you. You know, can we, can we find a way to, to be more systematic about how we track it? And one of the things you did say in your report, which is not in your ordinance, is this, um, uh, the, the, you suggested, and you said staff would support requiring that any planned submittal have an arborist report that details all the trees on site. You mentioned that that would cost anywhere from five hundred to two thousand dollars, which I think generally for a development project, it's not a lot of money, really, in the grand scheme of things, when you're looking at permit costs and everything like that. Um, you say that, um, requiring, and I'm just reading, requiring an arborist statement on the canopy of a given lot is standard requirement in many municipalities, and that staff would support its introduction in Glendale. But you also said it will require some public work, staff time, to review these reports. Um, still, I would, um, I would support us doing that, just that one addition to what you've proposed, um, but kind of leaving it there and saying, let's monitor this over the coming years and see, you know, see how we're doing. So that's kind of where I am on this whole thing.
Have comments on this?
But Councilmember, uh, Satrian has something to comment.
So I thought we were taking it bit by bit. Um, I do have serious concerns about the fees. Um, you know, look, some of the speakers even brought up La Cañada as an example to look at, and our staff reports points to La Cañada, um, which ranges, their fees range from a thousand sixty-two to the maximum of ten thousand eight hundred. And really, when I- maximum of 10,800. And really, when I, 13 by, 13 to 18 is for, your proposal is 3,650. La Cañada is 1,062. San Mateo, that you compare to, has 2,500 all across, all the way down to the largest, where we're at 26,210, and they're at 5,000. And so I don't know how my colleagues feel about these fees, but I do think that they are way too high in comparison. $10,000, 1726, I mean.
I'm okay with them. Just don't cut down mature oaks.
Well, I would, I would, I would care for us to, to do education. I don't think that anybody, look, I, I really don't think that people would be cutting down these trees, knowing that they're protected and that they would have to be fined. And that is my biggest concern.
Well, I think people, I think there are plenty of people that will, that know that that's a protected tree, and they figure they'll cut it down.
And they're going to pay $26,000.
Well, no, not now. They're not paying that kind of money.
They would, they would pay 10,000, right? As of our current thing.
Yeah.
How many times has a fee been levied, or how many, how many fines have we issued for cutting down trees? How many $10,000 fines have we issued?
Members of City Council, Councilmember Kasakian, as I mentioned, those are rare circumstances. There's, to my knowledge, since I've been here in five years, there's one of those. There are, as I mentioned, we typically go through the city attorney's office for these. And so there's been, just off the top of my head, I mentioned earlier, one to two per year, since I've been at the city for five years. So that's 10 in the last five years, which would fall under these types of categories. And these are-
Sounds like it's a pretty good deterrent amount.
Yeah, well, and, and that's what we, the ones we know of. There are probably others that we don't know of.
You're, you're getting that at your 10,000. And then when you're looking at the 13 to 18, you're trying to fine people, 3,600, and then 25 to 30, you are finding them with your proposed fees, 10,220. When you look at other cities, like La Cañada's finding 1,062, and San Mateo's finding 2,500. I would, I would want to see more community education and outreach on this.
Do both. I mean, I would like to see both. I'd like to see the, the education and the deterrent.
We currently have that fine, that fee, that penalty on the books. Sounds like, with the exception of one or two incidents, I guess, a year, and I don't know if we've actually pursued collecting that penalty from folks. Seems it's, it's a, it's a solid deterrent. I mean, I know that some people may argue that there isn't a penalty that's high enough for someone who cuts down a tree. I, I can understand that perspective. But $10,000 is still a lot of money. And if there is a person for whom that's not a lot of money, I mean, I don't know what would they be the ceiling for that, at that point. So I'm fine, I'm fine with it being as it is, to keep it as is.
Okay, at 10,000?
10?
No. Or as recommended?
As recommended.
For all, for all of the entire fee schedule?
Yep.
But maybe we can, so we have, there are four, four items. There are three ordinances for introduction and one resolution, right?
All right. So those three, they need to be introduced individually, and then the resolution takes a motion.
Okay. Can we introduce those ordinances and pass the resolution? I mean, then we come back next week and we vote on it.
Correct.
There's another opportunity to look at it.
Sure. And in terms of the fine amounts, you can certainly make
Yeah.
changes to lower, reduce them if there's discussion about that.
And with the, with the mayor, with the resolution, can we add the suggestion that the mayor and I made for the, the arborist, must be their report when plans are submitted?
The resolution appropriations, this appropriation for outreach services.
I would support an arborist report if we are able to kind of reel back some of the, the amounts of the proposed fines, penalties.
Oh, no.
I'm not sure, I'll defer to Lauren, but it sounds like you want the arborist reports to be a condition of one of these ordinances, maybe the first one, the requirement. The resolution appropriation, my understanding is just a outreach services, so it wouldn't be germane to the, what you're asking for.
Where would the arborist report go?
Where would it go, the first?
Members of City Council, that would go with the indigenous tree ordinance. I think one, one item that I deferred to the city attorney's expertise is if that would need to go to the planning commission, because that would not necessarily fall within our indigenous tree ordinance. It might be better placed in the, the zoning codes when it comes to development properties and required plan submittals.
We'd have to take a look at it. I would say, let's introduce it with that change, and we'll review it. And if it has to go back, I mean, if the council wants to move forward with it, we all, we'll decide whether it has to go back. I mean-
So we can pull it out next week if it turns out. If you, if you suggest that we have to go through a different process.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Are you going to introduce?
Yeah.
You want to introduce each one, and then, and then still, there will still be time for discussion next week on those fines, if that's the one, if that's an issue of concern.
So we can discuss the details of these fines next week?
Yeah, maybe you can lower them. I don't think you can increase them, which doesn't sound like you want to, so.
Okay.
But for the record, I'm for the fines as proposed by staff.
Likewise.
The higher fines.
Likewise.
When it comes to-
So that's three of us. Anyway, okay. So I'll, I'll introduce-
One, two, and three?
One, two, and three. Okay. A second?
Oh, we don't need a second for that, but we do for the resolution. This is the resolution of appropriation for
Outreach.
The outreach.
In the amount of $134,000 that will come out of the general fund.
We do.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second on that. So we'll take a roll call on that one.
Okay. Councilmembers Asadrian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Brotman?
Yes. Okay, so we've got the ordinances introduced, we've got the resolution. Okay, what's next?
Next are a discussion of Councilmember Future Agenda requests.
Oh.
A Councilmember Asadrian's request to join the California Equal Pay Pledge.
Okay. Please.
Sure. So the California Equal Pay Pledge, I sent background information to all of you. It's an initiative by the First Partners Office of the California Commission on the Status of Women. It's a symbol pledge that has three focal points, which is conduct an annual internal citywide gender pay analysis, review hiring and promotional processes and procedures, and promote equal pay best practices such as increased pay transparency, training or retaliation protections, and training for supervisors and managers. I do want to make clear that the, taking the pledge does not mean that the California Commission on the Status of Women or any other body is going to be coming and auditing us. This is an opportunity for us to look at our internal works. I would love for us to sign the pledge. City of Los Angeles, City of San Diego, Santa Barbara, Long Beach are among the cities that have already signed that. What I would love for us to do is sign from, signing the pledge, to send it over to the Commission on the Status of Women, for them to also take a look at these and work with our HR department on parts of implementation.
If I may, I ask about the financial impact on the audit, on the other, the parts of this pledge that the city would be required to do.
Councilmember Devine, member of City Council, obviously you will have to come at a cost. I don't, I don't know how much at this point. I have to confer with our HR department.
Can, can we forego the vote until we find out, or from, till the status of women?
Well, recall, this is just putting on the agenda, so as part of the report-
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I thought we were voting on it tonight. Okay.
Well, I, I would mention that, I don't think it escapes any of us, that we currently only have one woman department head in the city that's a woman. We just hired the first woman of color. And I want to make sure that we are taking proactive measures and doing internal audits in our hiring and recruitment processes. And I'll be very specific. I think even, you know, when I visited the fire departments, I've been one of the people that's been very vocal about us not having enough women firefighters. Going and visiting our facilities, I recognize that, that, that may be one of the issues that we have, where, you know, if I was applying, I wouldn't feel comfortable being there. So it's not just a matter of the positions that we have open, but the kind of environment that we're looking to create, to attract women to these positions.
We had a female city manager at the very top, foreign-born.
We did.
And she left us. It's not like-
We did.
Like, you know, so-
Right. And, you know-
I mean, the implication that we're somehow discriminating against women, I think that's the underlying tone of this.
It is absolutely not. It is absolutely not. I think taking the Equal Pay Pledge-
Why does it have to be audited? It says we have to conduct an audit of our-
I think it's looking at our practices and how we implement them.
It's internal law, right?
Yes, yes.
It's not having somebody come in and audit.
No one's coming in to audit us.
It says audit the city.
Correct. And right, and right underneath that, it also states-
Who's going to audit it? We're going to let a man audit that, or does it have to be a woman?
I think that this is an opportunity for the Commission on the Status of Women to take the meat of this pledge and work with HR in ways of us reviewing our recruitment and hiring processes, as well as our promotional practices.
Well, this is just, this is to agendize the item. It will come back. We can have this discussion, I think.
I'll second it.
The question right now should be, does it merit being agendized?
I can, I'll-
It's the First Partner, though. Is that like the First Lady of the state?
The First Evil.
Is that what they call her now?
So I, I will also say that I had a meeting with the California Commission on the Status of Women on this, and they actually bring in other partners to help cities and businesses move in this space. So they have actually a lot of resources that they can bring to the table for us. So, but I, I think what I'm asking for is that it's not just the pledge that's brought back, but with the pledge and signing of the pledge, the report also includes us directing the Commission on the Status of Women to work with HR. Those would be two separate things. Okay.
Is that a meeting, is that a meeting confer item? If we go through our collective bargaining?
I'll have to check.
I'm, I'm open to having this discussion
Yes.
as an item.
So you're seconding it?
Okay.
Can we have a roll call?
Councilmembers Asadrian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
abstain. I'll wait till the motion comes forward to talk.
Mayor Brotman?
Yes. Okay. And the next one?
Next one is Mayor Brotman's request to develop a Glendale-specific coyote, coyote management plan.
Okay. We already talked about this.
Are we going to be audited?
By, by Roadrunners.
We can bring the coyotes into audit. I don't know. But, okay. I don't really know that. It sounded like there was general support at the last meeting, so I won't say anything. I got a second?
I'll second it, sure.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. Roll call, please.
May I?
Oh, yeah, go, go, go.
No, my comment, this general comment about the list of requests from council that keeps scrolling, and I have sent you all reminders that we have almost 60 items on our work plan that was established and adopted by council to be completed this year. And I believe with these two items, we probably have around almost 20 other items to follow up on. Just to give you perspective and context as to-
Just remind us during the budget cycle, okay?
There's no rush, no rush.
These, these will take time.
What, is there a caller?
There's a caller.
On this item, on the coyote?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
We have one caller. Victoria Valentine is the caller. Victoria, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Thank you. I hope to hear about where, how you ID where there is a problem with the coyotes, why there is a problem, or there isn't, and what's causing it. The city's excavating mountains. Gold mining is taking place in Glendale, and so the wildlife corridors are being destroyed. But I want to share that, for example, on my block, coyotes on my block are hunting and feeding on pests, underground gophers, which is a very good thing. So I hope we'll hear, I don't know what the maintenance mean, maybe the person will get a job to do the maintenance, a ranger or a sheriff. So wildlife has rights, and it should, I believe it's protected. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. That's all.
Okay. Roll call? Roll call on this item?
Councilmembers Asadrian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Brotman?
Yes. Thank you. Next?
Next is oral communications. We have a number of cards.
I have four cards.
And two callers.
And two callers. Okay. We'll start with Maria Elena Padilla. Okay. Mauricio Rodriguez? No. Ray Shelton? Oh, I know you haven't left, Rodeo Carapadian. Carapedian. How do you, how do you do the vowel? Carapedian or Carapedian?
I'll be very brief. I didn't get a chance to do this last week, so I want to come in this week and, in person, on behalf of my wife, and I thank each and every one of you. Thank you very much for your decisions of last week, allowing us to move forward our project. Thank you, all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee.
Thank you. Wow, you sat through all the way to 11:30. You could have sent an email, but, all right. Who do we have on the phone?
We have an anonymous caller on the telephone, on the phone line. You're on air. You have five minutes.
We do, I think, right?
Good evening, councilmembers. I have a question. First question is, the intersection of Foothill Boulevard and Lowell Avenue, I'm not sure whose jurisdiction it is, because it's in the, it's between Tahunga, which is Los Angeles, and it's in Laguna Center, which is you guys. That intersection has a huge pothole, and I almost drove into it, and I, it almost, I almost damaged the rim of my vehicle. The second thing I'd like to bring to your attention is that I was at Dunsmore Park with my family, and we had a very disappointing experience, because the drinking fountain doesn't work, because I had family members who were trying to drink water, and drinking fountain doesn't work. And there's a hand washing sink on the prep table of, of the picnic area where we were having our picnic. That hand washing sink doesn't have a faucet on it. And I'd like to see if your people who are in charge of the parks have done some regular inspections to check, to see if the water fountain's functioning properly, the sink is functioning properly. And I've also seen other families who've had a disappointing experience, because they were trying to use the hand washing sink on their picnic table, and it doesn't work, and it was clogged. The other thing I'd like to ask about is, I do see you guys are remodeling the Fremont Park. The one thing that I do see, it says you guys are going to have a prep table on A5, according to the map that you guys have provided for the public to look at. Is that prep table going to have a hand washing sink, so picnic guests can use it to wash their hands? That's something I'd like to see, if that's also part of the plan at that park. The last thing I'd like to ask is, has the city council ever, ever looked into looking at the ordinance where we can, where we can create an ordinance where sex offenders cannot live in Glendale by making it so that they have to live further away from Glendale? That's a good idea, because we can push these people out of Glendale and let the good residents stay in Glendale. Has that been something that you guys looked into? That'll be it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final caller is Gayane. Gayane, you're on air. You have five minutes.
Good evening, everyone. This will be the last call that you will probably hear. I just wanted to mention a couple things. I called earlier to- I called earlier to talk about a community event, but my call didn't go through, so let me just briefly mention it. The 2024 Glendale Unified School District Boards of Education Candidate Forum will be held tomorrow evening, Wednesday, February 7th, at 7:00 PM, at the Glendale Unified School District Office on Jackson. Seating is limited, so please show up a bit early if you need to. However, Glendale residents with Spectrum TV can watch it on television on Channel 15, or if they have U-verse, to watch it on Channel 99. It is very important that Glendaleans tune in, even if they don't have a child in school, to please watch and listen to the candidates and what they have to say about their decisions on school curriculum, budget, and safety. Only then, they can make their own decisions based on what they hear from the candidate directly, instead of hearing from every Tom, Dick, or Harry who don't align with the candidate they aren't fond of. Everyone in Area E to vote for Aneta Kerpekiyan. She is a mother of two children in the district, and a wife to a Glendale Unified School grad. She is fighting to bring back academic excellence and parental rights. Please vote for Aneta Kerpekiyan. Now, one thing I'd like to also mention is I want to give a shout out to some gratitude. I would like to say thank you to Councilwoman Ara Najarian, who has continuously been the voice of reason throughout many of these city council meetings, from all aspects of items on the countless agendas, from the rental rights issues to the districting of the city. I really appreciate you fighting for us. It really means a lot. Many people don't have time to sit around and wait until 11:32 to call and discuss. But know, Mr. Najarian, that we are thankful. Another thank you I'd like to say is for the staff, from Sipon Zadurian to Edgar Akopian, your countless efforts in helping every caller with their inquiries and their concerns related to the city's rent control and rent housing. They are doing a phenomenal job, and they should definitely be awarded for that. So, thank you to them. I also want to say thank you to Mr. Rubi Golanyan for being able to keep up with all these requests that the city council members are doing. I understand it is 60 of them, probably will even roll more by the end of this, you know, half a year. So, thank you for all that you do. One note, not saying it in a degrading manner, but Ms. Councilwoman Elena Asatrian, you kept asking the housing reps with regards to identifying mom and pop owners of apartment buildings in cities, specifically differentiating the LLC ownership versus the mom and pop ownership. Not sure if you are knowledgeable about that, but a lot of mom and pop owners of apartment buildings, many of them throughout the city of Glendale, own their properties under an LLC for many reasons, which no need for me to get into detail. So, it is impossible to check about the 5,000 apartment buildings in the city of Glendale to see who is a mom and pop and who is LLC, because most of them are mom and pop. Thank you, everyone, for all you do. Have a wonderful night.
Yes, two items.
Okay. I move that the claim for damages of Alan Kalesian's, Claim Number 24-0047B, and hereby is approved for the total sum of $16,750. The Director of Finance is authorized to issue a warrant in said sum for delivery by the city attorney upon the receipt of a properly executed release.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asatrian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Botman?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the city attorney be and hereby is authorized to institute legal proceedings against Los Angeles County Sanitation District, and those 1 through 20, in order to recover medical and other expenses it has paid for the benefit of an employee under the Workers' Compensation Insurance and Safety Act. Said proceedings are appropriate under Labor Code Section 3852 and 3853, which authorize employers to pursue recovery of workers' compensation benefits paid to, to an employee who was injured on the job.
Second, anyone?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asatrian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Botman?
Yes. And do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Second. We are adjourned. That's the first time I've actually done that, the whole year. I was just looking at this, thinking, I gotta, I gotta at least do it once.